In addition to adequate notice under the Open Public Meetings Act, electronic notice of this remote public meeting as is permitted under NJSA ten four nine point three. And was placed on the city of Newark website. Members of the public can make public comments by audio or by audio and video as permitted by the Zoom electronic communication platform. Now, while in the Zoom meeting, press on raise hand on the bottom left corner of your computer screen or mobile device. Raise hands allow participants to notify the host that they would like to speak without interrupting them. If you are calling in, press star nine on your telephone to raise your hand. Central Planning Board will be mindful the number of items on the agenda would move as expeditionally as possible to complete the agenda. However, due to the amount of development requiring board review and a complexity of projects, it may not be possible to hear every item if the meeting runs later than eleven P M. In the event that the agenda is not completed by eleven tonight, the board will finish hearing the application that are in the process of listening to. But no new applications will be called after that item is complete. Any application had not been heard by that time will be rescheduled to the earliest available date, which will be announced on record if possible. The media of the Central Planning Board will now come to order. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Commissioner Jordan. We have his absent. Commissioner Baez. We have his absent. Commissioner Purdy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Simmons. We have his absent. Commissioner Scott Roundtree.
President.
Commissioner De Silva.
Present.
Commissioner James.
Yeah.
Commissioner Austin.
Here.
Co-chair Witcher.
Here.
Here.
We have a quorum chair.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. CBB, let's start with number one. It's an extension CPB twenty two dash nineteen four seventy five dash forty one South Sixteenth Street. Are the applicants available?
Yes, we have Ms. Moore joining up. And we do have Commissioner Baez that just joined us as well.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Here we are.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Marcia Moore from the law firm of Post Pollock on behalf of the applicant Rising Plains Urban Renewal LLC. So this application, as Madam Secretary indicated, the property is at four seventy five forty one South Sixteenth Street, block three twenty seven, lot fifteen. And we are before this board in two thousand twenty two in October to propose a four-story nineteen-unit building, all of which would be affordable. We have secured all our resolution compliance, engineering, water and sewer, and planning. And we're seeking a one-year extension retroactive to two thousand twenty two in order for the applicant to apply for her permits. It's just a one-year.
Board, any question? Board, any questions or comments about this one-year extension? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from the public?
Ain't none at this time, Chair.
In that case, I need a motion.
So move.
Seconded.
Move by Commissioner James, second by co-chair Witcher. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Purdy.
Yes.
Commissioner Baez. Commissioner Baez.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
You're fine. De Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree.
Yes.
Commissioner James.
Yes.
Commissioner Austin.
Yes.
Co-chair Witcher.
Yes.
Chair Richardson.
Yes, your extension has been approved. Thank you. Good luck. Let's move to CPB twenty two dash one twenty four, which is also an extension. Ms. Moore, we're gonna get back to you. I know you have another one. Which is one twenty nine dash one thirty one South Eleventh Street. Is the applicant or attorney available?
Yes, the attorney is.
Good afternoon, Board and Chairs. Gero Cipio, Cipio Law on behalf of the applicant, MV Design Group LLC. I'm requesting an extension for one year. It was a hearing on May eighth, two thousand twenty three. And the board approved the minor subdivision and a new two-family dwelling for one twenty nine dash one thirty one, lock eighteen fifty eight, lock twenty four. The applicant put things in place with regards to getting the subdivision deed completed and everything needed for permits, and the applicant is seeking a one-year extension to complete the project.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments about this one-year extension? Hearing none. Any questions from the public?
Ain't none at this time, Chair.
In that case, I need a motion.
Move it.
Move by Commissioner Purdy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baez. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner De Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree.
Yes.
Commissioner Baez.
Yes.
Commissioner Purdy.
Yes.
Commissioner James.
Yes.
Commissioner Austin.
Yes.
Co-chair Witcher.
Yes.
Chair Richardson.
Yes. Your extension has been approved. Good luck.
Thank you, Chair and Board.
Let's move to CPB twenty four dash eighty seven, which is Mulberry Point. The attorney is Mr. Calvin Souter. This is Carrie from our last meeting, and we carried this application to this meeting to come to a resolution in terms of when they could have a full meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Calvin Souter here on behalf of the applicant.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, as I believe we've sent in correspondence to the city, we would like to conclude our hearing this evening. All of our professionals are available this evening, and we find no reason why we are not able to proceed. All of our professionals are available this evening. They are prepared to be cross-examined if someone is here to cross-examine them. But I do note for the record that we have rested our application. And any additional adjournment would be at the purview of this board, which we think it would only prejudice our client considering that we've concluded, and we have, there is no basis that we believe that this board would have to carry this to another hearing date, being that this is our request for a hearing. We have made our applicant and their professionals available for the other side to cross-examine. I'm not sure if they're here or not this evening, but if they are here, they would be able to cross-examine any of our professionals. And the only purpose for adjourning would be to accommodate a non-applicant, which we believe would not be appropriate under the rule.
Mr. Chairman, if I might jump in, just to refresh the board's message, and I think it's part of the record. What we stated, and I believe the board chair emphasized, was that this was being carried strictly for notice purposes to preserve notice that at this particular date, we were going to provide an additional date for the testimony to continue. There are, there is an objector. There's an attorney of record. He has done his preliminary work with cross-examinations. You were aware that this was not moving forward this evening. There's been correspondence and emails between myself, your office, the objector's attorney, and it was succinctly stated on the record that this application was not moving forward today. The purpose was that we could find a date for a special meeting to continue this application because we know there's additional time necessary for all parties. And a date was proposed to you of April twenty eighth, which you said was you were not available. So now, it's my understanding that the board secretary has come up with a date that we will continue that, and that's the purpose of tonight's meeting, is to pick a date, put it on record that everybody knows that when the next hearing is gonna be, when the hearing is gonna be continued, but we're not, the board's not prepared. And I'm not gonna advise the board to move forward on this particular application because that was not the understanding.
Understood, Mr. Beck. I just want to preserve the record. No disrespect to you as a professional. We objected then and wanted to move forward then. And our position remains the same this evening that this board would only be adjourning this and continuing this for reasons upon which we believe would be inappropriate. And we need to be able to preserve that record. And we've provided the city, we've melded over to you, Mr. Beck, as well as to the board secretary, what we believe to be our reasoning behind that. And I remind this group that there is a reasonableness standard that is here when it comes to allowing folks to object and to cross-examine. So we got a little carried away last time because folks wanted to know where my professionals went to nursery school. And then where they went to elementary school and high school to see on which whether or not that would be okay. And they spent hours doing that, and we're gonna be looking for other days to do so. Respectfully, we were requested, if we're not going to be heard today, that we be heard immediately, and that that be at some point next week.
Well, before we go to that point, Mr. Souter, also, you were well aware, as the board was well aware, that this was not carried to this meeting to continue it because we had a full agenda tonight. So we couldn't have heard it if we wanted to. You would have been put off to the next available meeting, which might have been sometime towards the end of May. We afforded you an opportunity for special. We gave you a date. It didn't work. I do believe the board secretary does have a proposed date. And I'm not gonna speak out of turn. That's not my position, but if, Madam Secretary, you do have a proposed date where you, that you might think we have some space to continue this application, I'll open the floor to you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We were proposing, well, the office planning and zoning proposes that there's already a special schedule for May twelfth, so that application can join that agenda. Being as though people twenty eighth is not a, it's.
So let me, let me ask a question. From hearing Mr. Souter correctly, you said immediate as in next week. What is, is there anything that would prohibit this board from hearing this application next week?
Yes, we can't send notices out for that soon.
Well, his, the notices are preserved, right?
Well, for the, in order to have a meeting, you have to notice to the newspapers. We would have to prepare it, and it's not enough time for my office.
Understood. So the earliest available.
If we could try to find the date that's more than, you know, we're talking five, six weeks out, right, which would be another seven weeks. You know, there comes a point, right, where we're entitled to some finality here in terms of this board's opinion.
Well, Mr. Souter, don't you think, and I would have, I would have thought you would have asked for specials so you would have an entire evening to have this application heard rather than have it put on a regular agenda when typically you know our agendas are anywhere from six to eight applications. And this is a rather lengthy application, so I mean, you can't put the notice on the board.
Mr. Beck, what I've learned is that when we've asked for specials as of late, we end up getting dates that are beyond the regular scheduled meeting that we're asked for at times, so you know, this is a request that is being granted because of cross-examination and someone else. This has, our chief application has been put forward, right? Like, we're only carrying this for the purposes of allowing someone to object, which, listen, that's the board's purview. I'm not arguing and saying that you shouldn't allow people to object. But that is the only thing that we're dealing with. So I don't think it would be reasonable for my client to have to pay five thousand dollars to be heard for someone to fight them. I don't think that's, you know, but we still have a timeliness issue that we should resolve here. And outside of the ten-day period to get noticed, I think it would be appropriate for us to find a date that is more than, shorter than six weeks out from now.
And the board offered you one of the twenty eighth of April, and you said you weren't available. Was there somebody else in your office perhaps?
There was, there was someone, I mean, you were talking about a two-towered, thousand-unit.
Okay.
Development, right?
But you're not.
Before then, right, that would be twenty-one days from now. There needs to be ten days worth of notice, right? We can get back before the board, before the twenty eighth of this month.
Well, the twenty-first, we have a full agenda. That's our next regular meeting, and you know.
Okay, so if we were to do the twenty-second, you would have plenty of time to notice if the members of this board were available. If we were to do the twenty-second, right, rather than needing to wait additional weeks to get this done, and I would respectfully request that we get the twenty-second then, if the members of the board are available.
Mr. Chairman, that's solely, obviously, your.
And that's, we're talking about a special on the twenty-second?
That is a Tuesday, April twenty-second, correct? That would be the day after our regular meeting on the twenty, our next meeting on the twenty-first.
And you're opposed to doing a special, Mr. Souter?
I'm not opposed to doing the special. I just don't think my.
Let's see if the.
Sure.
So.
That's up.
Can we, can we poll the board members, commissioners? Does everyone be available? Can we get a quorum on the twenty-second?
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
All right, that's one. Take a roll, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Baez. Commissioner Purdy.
No.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree.
I can make myself available if you need a form.
Commissioner De Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner James.
Commissioner James. Jermaine.
Commissioner Austin.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, to me as well. I just checked calendar. Yes.
Sorry about that, Jay.
Chair or co-chair will be available?
No, thank you.
Chair Richardson.
I'm gonna be out of the country. Oh. I won't be back until the twenty-third.
And your secretary is unavailable as well.
So unfortunately, sir. Can't do the twenty-second.
Do you want to consider the twenty-fourth, which is a Thursday?
You know what? That's spring break, so. Yeah. I mean, I'm available on the twenty-fourth. I could do the twenty-fourth from back.
I'm second.
Madam Secretary, let's do another roll.
One second, before we commit to that, let me just double-check to make sure the Board of Adjustments doesn't have a meeting on that day, because we wouldn't be able to.
That's right. That's a Thursday, yeah.
Right.
Your old board, Mr. Beck.
Well, thank you for reminding me. Thanks for having me back.
You used to love that board.
As much as I did the historic board.
Mr. Chair, I think we might be able to make the twenty-eighth work. I think I may just extend my trip in Portugal and do it from Portugal.
Hey, that sounds better.
There you go. All right.
You could fly us out there. We could do it in your hotel.
I wouldn't want the cross-exa, our objector to say that I had a benefit by having everybody locally with me. Otherwise, I would love for this entire board to be there with me.
Well, if you could make that happen, we can do it after the meeting.
I'll be right here in North New Jersey.
Now, it might be a summer cover.
All right, where are we? So we're back to the twenty-eighth.
Right.
Right? And you don't have to notice. Your notice will be preserved. Mr. Beck, take the floor.
Yeah, just ever so briefly, I don't have it in front of me, and it's been a while since I looked at it. Was Mr. Simon, did he say he was not gonna be available through what date? Was the twenty-eighth one of those dates? And I know you responded back saying that it's up to the applicant to adjourn to put it off as opposed to an objector. So I'm just trying to remember for the record, did he suggest he was unavailable on the twenty-eighth?
I don't, not necessarily, well.
Okay, well, you're permitted. You're the applicant, and if you, it's your application, so if an objector can send somebody to, I just want to make sure the record's complete and that it was brought up. That's all. I'm just trying to keep transparency. So you want to proceed on the twenty-eighth, correct, Mr. Souter?
Correct.
Okay.
Newly noted, and we'll see you on this application on the twenty-eighth.
And the notices will be preserved and.
Yes, sir. That's Mulberry Point. All right.
Six P M.
Let's go to CPB twenty-three dash eighty-four. Mr. Souter. Forty-two dash sixty-two Wheeler Point. Yeah, we're going to the next application. That one's put to bed. That's the twenty-eighth. CPB twenty-three dash eighty-four forty-two dash.
You're breaking up, Chair.
Two Wheeler Point Road slash Delancey Street.
I heard the last.
Did you get that? All right, so co-chair Witcher, can you take over?
Here I am. Let me switch devices. All right, then, application we are about to hear is number four on the agenda, CPB twenty-three dash eighty-four forty-two through sixty-two Wheeler Point Road, also known as two fifty-three to two seventy-five Delancey Street.
Thank you, Calvin Souter, appearing on behalf of the applicant here. I like to introduce this as a new eight-story multifamily that's seven stores of residential housing, a store, a floor of parking on the ground level that will include one hundred and fifty parking spaces. This takes up what right now is a vacant lot where we get used to seeing industrial things and what otherwise would be a residential neighborhood. As our city continues to grow, I'm happy to represent projects such as this where we're bringing a completely different feel and vibe, if you will, to our neighborhood. So this is not your typical box-type development. You're gonna see something that I think we've been dying to see here in the city of Newark from an architectural perspective and a space perspective, close to our train and making the best of our assets here in the city of Newark. We are in receipt of a January ninth, two thousand twenty-three water and sewer memo, a March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five engineer's report, as well as the April third, two thousand twenty-five planner's report. I believe we can comply with all of the issues that have been stated within these reports. There may be one or two things that we need to work out with the engineers. However, in their report, I believe they stated them as such. There are things that after approval we would be able to go and have conversations on. Other than that, we will have some testimony here based on the reports that have been received. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would like to call our experts. We have our civil engineer, Christian Quado. Our architect is Mr. Noel Nusial. And I do have the owner applicant here available if needed as well. But I'd like by starting Mr. Quado, calling him initially, Mr. Chair.
Co-chair Witcher has taken over.
All right, where's Mr. Quado?
Yeah, he's, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Quado. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and your affiliation to this application.
My name is Christian Quado, C H R I S T I A N. Last name Quado, C U E T O. I am a civil engineer who reviewed the plan and designed the plans for this project for Harper Consultants, three twenty North Avenue East, Cranford, New Jersey.
Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Quado. Can you give your experience or CV, if you will, for the purview of this board?
Sure. I am the graduate of NJIT with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I've been practicing civil engineering since two thousand and seven, and my license is in good standing. I've been in front of this board a few times.
All right, you're accepted by the board and can proceed with your testimony.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Mr. Quado, can you, you prepared these plans, correct?
Yes, I did.
Can you walk us through your plans, please?
Sure, I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Okay. So let me go over the site again, start from the repetition. This is block one zero nine six, block five, and block one oh nine six, slots thirty-four, thirty-seven, and forty-one as forty-two, forty-two sixty-two Wheeler Point Road and two fifty-three to two seventy-five Delancey Street. The site has frontage along Wheeler Point Road and Delancey Street with the rear of the property adjacent to the NJRR and Conrail railroad lines. Wheeler Point Road is a two-way street. And the site is located between Bridge Street and Delancey Street. Delancey Street is a vacated paper street along the site boundary. The site is located in the I-two zone, but this is exclusively covered by the Delancey Street redevelopment area. The surrounding area is primarily industrial uses, but there are some residential uses adjacent to the property. We go to sheet two of our plan. The existing site is, as stated, was, is vacant and is used right now as storage for vehicle and construction equipment. The existing surface of this property is a combination of compacted DGA, concrete, brick, and asphalt. The site does contain some vacated streets, Clifford Street and Varnum Street along the easterly property line. According to firm mapping, the site is not located within a special flood hazard area. And I'm going to now go to sheet three, which is the lay-on dimensioning plan. The applicant is proposing to demolish the entire site and construct a eight-story, two-hundred-and-ninety-five multifamily building. The building will take up the almost entirety of the lot area. The applicant meets almost all the bulk standards under the redevelopment area except for side yard setback and rear yard setback along the railroad line. Five feet is required, and we are, and we're going to the property line. It should be noted, and I'll let the architect go into further detail with this, that the parking area on the first floor goes to the property line, but the residential uses, starting on. Uses starting on the second floor do set back a bit from the property line. The first floor will be for parking, utility, storage. And refuse and the lobby area giving access to the site. The applicant is proposing one hundred fifty parking spaces where one hundred and forty eight parking spaces are required. The applicant is proposing twenty three EV spaces, there was a, there is a misprint here, this is a. A repeat, there's only twenty three EV charging stations that are going to be located as part of this project. The applicant is proposing. Sixty five biking spaces, the planner's letter calls out that we are we are proposing thirty five indoor. And thirty outdoor biking spaces, but all these biking spaces are located around the parking area. Are enclosed inside the parking area, so we're not really proposing anything outside the building, so no outdoor bike storage. Floors two through eight will contain two hundred ninety five units. Just doing the breakdown, that's fifty nine studios, two hundred and nine one bedrooms. Twenty six two bedrooms and one three bedroom. The applicant agrees to comply with the affordable housing requirements stated in the inclusionary zoning ordinance. Access into the building will be via a twenty foot wide driveway. The driveway is twenty four feet to accommodate two ten-foot doors and a middle security console. Due to this, we are requesting a variance for the twenty four foot driveway. The driveway leads into the parking area, the parking is ninety degree parking. Again, the applicant is proposing one hundred and fifty spaces, six of which will be eighty eight parking. The eighty eight parking is located close to the lobby area for access. The parking driveway aisles go in a almost kind of circular way to go around and then back out. Into Wheeler Point Road and again, this is a two-way driveway aisle. There are several recycling and trash rooms located in the middle of the parking lot. Recycling and refuse from these areas will be brought to the trash, a bigger trash area. Which is located adjacent to the Delancey Street vacated street. From there, there's a twelve-foot high wide door that brings everything to a loading area. Which is approximately ten feet by thirty nine point four feet. This. This area here will be used for loading and unloading as well as for refuse and recycling. I did do a separate truck turning template, which I'll get to later, that shows that we can get a. A refuse vehicle into into this loading area.
Mister Quado, just to be clear, you you are responding, when you made that comment, you're responding specifically to the engineers' questions?
That's correct. Let's see, the applicant is. Is also proposing new curving and sidewalk along the frontages of Wheeler Point Road. Unfortunately, the distance between the wider wide array and the back of the curb is a little over six feet. The applicant can't maintain a six-foot wide sidewalk, which is the requirement. And also include a shade tree. I believe we could do one or the other, or we could do a four-foot wide sidewalk with with a smaller shade tree. Or we could just do a six-foot wide sidewalk and we could do, we could do a donation to a tree fund if the board desires. The applicant is also proposing a five-foot high. Vinyl fence along. The railroad line and along the portion of Delancey Street. We are, we can comply with the planner's letter not to to change it from vinyl and we will either be steel. Or aluminum fencing along the along this area. The planner also makes reference to a lack of buffer area between the shared lot line with the railroad. They're requesting five feet, however, I, it's my opinion that. Having a buffer is more for a, if there was another building next to it and not for the railroad line, I feel like. This having the building go all the way to the property line would not be detrimental to the parking area. On the ground floor, if it goes all the way to the property line. The planner also makes comments about the parking screening and. We can do a screening along the parking area to comply with his comments. Going to sheet four, which is our grading and drainage. The site, as mentioned, is a mixture of compacted DGA, asphalt, brick and concrete. The applicant is proposing to construct a building with parking on the ground floor and the majority of runoff is are going to be the roof area. The parking has been graded to drain runoff towards the underground detention. But the only runoff coming from the cars will will be anything that's off of it during any rain or snow. For stormwater management, the applicant is proposing two detention systems located at different parts of the site. To collect all the runoff from the from the site and then attenuate the flow. To the existing storm sewer, combined sewer along Wheeler Point Road. The applicant will revise the site plan. In regards to the comments from the engineer's office as well as the city engineer's office regarding the stormwater management and we will also. Comply and do a meeting with the water and sewer department to address any comments they have with the. Water and sanitary sewer connections that we are proposing to do along Wheeler Point Road. For the landscaping, as stated, this site is mostly the building, so we did propose some shade trees along the. Frontage of Wheeler Point Road as well as some landscaping along. The near the loading area, near Delancey. Based on what the the board would want, we will modify the landscaping plan to address the comments of the board and its professionals. And lastly, there was a question by the by the planner in regards to the. The vacated. Rights of the eneasements along the existing site. And as a condition of approval. We recommend that the applicant's attorney will work with the city attorney to establish any necessary rights for any railroad or access or road. Eneasements with the town, any utility eneasements will be coordinated with the corresponding company. And if any utility is still in use, they will be rerouted and if not removed as part of this project. Any revised survey will be completed after all rights have been determined for the site. Every, any other comment in the engineer or planners that we can comply with. That I didn't bring up during my testimony.
Thank you. With that. Vice Chair Witcher, turn it over to the board.
That's correct, I see Mister Trafficante's hand is raised. Mister Trafficante?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, good evening, Mister Trafficante, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board should be truthful?
I do.
Please identify yourself and your affiliation briefly.
Name is Charles Trafficante, I am a principal engineer, I am also a professional engineer. I am working for the city of Newark Department of Engineering, my license is active and in good standing. May I proceed?
Yes, you may.
Mister Quado?
Good afternoon, actually, say good evening.
Good evening, for clarity, the plans you're referring to, were they last revised November twelfth, two thousand twenty four? The plans by Harbor, was it Clean Harbor?
Yes, those are the, those are the plans that I have as that I'm using for my exhibit right now.
All right, well, there's some confusion, the plans we have noted one hundred and forty nine dwelling units and one hundred and forty nine parking spaces. Your claim is one fifty, not the quibble, but which is it, all right, because there's a lot writing on this, could you clarify?
I believe it's, you mean in terms of the parking spaces?
Parking spaces and dwelling units, I counted the parking spaces, came up with one hundred and forty nine and I believe somewhere on the site plans. Or amended application, I think it was amended site plans, it was noted one hundred and forty nine dwelling units, which is.
I believe it's one hundred and fifty spaces and two hundred ninety five residential units.
Two hundred and ninety, excuse me, two hundred and ninety five, bigger part, okay, but your claim is one hundred and fifty. All right, well, you may be off by one, I included a one in the bottom down there where it says one, so. And I counted three times, I still get one forty nine, so.
If I, if I had a hundred and fifty fingers, I'd be able to count it. As of right now, I I I'm gonna stick with a hundred and fifty.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, if you're wrong, you're gonna amend the plans, right?
Yes, if 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 I'm off by one, I will amend the plans.
Right, and you don't need, if you are, it won't trigger the need for variance, right?
No, plus, I did not even include the the credit that the EV spaces would do. I believe that's a credit of fifteen fifteen spaces if we include twenty three EV spaces.
Well, you have it if you need it.
Yes.
And to go back to the testimony provided before about the loading zone, that's often a vacated portion of. I believe Delancey Street, yeah. What size trucks, for the record, what size trucks will be using that, is it thirty foot?
Well, the the space is ten foot by thirty nine point four, but it will be just essentially for refuse vehicles. Not for anything really, anything really larger than that, maybe a little bit bigger than a box truck.
All right, well, again, you're not gonna look at them to bring in moving trailers, you know, for residents, forty foot or bigger. You're gonna limit it to thirty? Where I'm going with this is, you're gonna have to, we're gonna need to put signs on. That are illuminated at night, identify the maximum trucks that can use that building zone, so there's no doubt.
That has no issues doing that, and any type of move-in would be coordinated with the with the city if if needed. I, you know, we're not gonna just have a bunch of trucks coming out here to unload at the same time.
Right, but for now, you said a thirty-foot long garbage truck can use that for recycling and solid waste?
Yes.
Okay. Otherwise. For the record, I know the attorney spoke, can you comply with all the comments? And the Department of Engineers report to the planning board did in March thirty first, two thousand twenty five?
Everything that I didn't. I didn't make a comment about previously.
So is that yes?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, all right, for the record, thank you, sir, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Trafficante. I see Commissioner Bias has his hand raised. Commissioner Bias?
Ma'am, thank you. Yeah. But if I share, just a question, this question, I believe it's a two hundred and ninety five unit. And what is that, twenty eight, twenty three, two-bedroom apartment? And you only making one three-bedroom apartment in this big redevelopment? So, I'm a citizen of Newark, I live in Newark for forty three years. So me, I have a three sibling and I wanna move over there. I cannot move over there because it's only one three-bedroom apartment over there, I think it's a little insane to me, you know? And also you comply with the housing authority, twenty percent affordable housing, you know the. Pretty much many people that has, are gonna move out there, they all have a sibling. So to me, it's a little insane that it's only one three-bedroom apartment in here. So you know, I just wanted the board to take consideration on that because I think it's a little insane to me, but yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Purdy?
Yes, I got one concern, anybody check out the air quality in the area?
We didn't do, we didn't do an air quality analysis as part of our application.
I worked there, that's deep, that's deep in the industrial area, a lot of fuel company, chemical companies down there. And I worked there before in the area down there and that weaving is real bad overnight. When the traffic stopped and calmed down, all the films would come right in the seat, right in the building. I think they need to test the air down there overnight.
Commissioner Purdy, I agree.
We we can, we can test test the air in in the area, this is Calvin Souter, counsel for. Counsel for the applicant, so we don't have a problem with doing a air quality test as a condition of approval.
All right, thank you, Counselor Souter, now who's your next professional? Thank you, Commissioner Purdy.
Thank you, my my next professional is Mister Musio, our architect.
Can we reclaim the screen? Mister Kuwaito, thank you, sir.
Thank you, good evening, Mister Musio, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board should be truthful?
I do, yes.
Thank you, please state your name and affiliation to this application.
My name is Noel Musio, I am principal of the Musio Group Architects in Mountainside, New Jersey. Located at one ninety one Mill Lane in Mountainside, zero seven zero nine two. I am a project architect of the project and I went to the Rhode Island School of Design. And have received bachelor's of architecture and bachelor's of fine arts. I am licensed in the state of New Jersey and my license is in good standing.
All right. Your license is current and in good, okay, you can proceed with your testimony.
Thank you.
Mister Musio, you you prepared these plans, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Can you walk us through this site and when you finish, if you have a color version of this to share, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, yes, I do, we've also prepared some presentation, it's the the same drawings, but a colorized version of these. To help clarify the various levels, so just a general overview, this is the the site plan showing the the various. Levels of the tiers of the building, we have the the main mass fronting Wheeler Point Road. With Delancey Street to the plan east and the railroad, I guess, planned southwest. It is, as mentioned before, it is an eight-story building comprised of seven residential levels, over one level of parking. Something that we tried to do generally in the project was. Provide a buffer from that railroad while also providing and orienting views. Towards towards New York City, so that was the the general concept in in the massing. To try to get light into between the masses while still providing. Views towards the city, so I'm going to go, this is the the lighting plan for the project. I'm gonna touch on this again, but I'm gonna jump to the floor plans because that, I'm just gonna get an overview of the the project in general. And so I'm gonna bring up the presentation plan. This is a. A one zero one, it is the same drawing as what was previously submitted. But it's a color rendition of that drawing to help clarify, so this would be, I guess, exhibit.
Madam Secretary, if you could please mark mark this exhibit.
As Mister Quado mentioned before, we have one hundred and fifty parking spaces. The entry to the building would be at the corner of Wheeler Point Road and and Delancey Street. Where people would come from both the the secure parking lot into the lobby and the elevators and go upstairs. As was noted before, the entry to the the trash would be off of Delancey Street as well as the loading zone. The trash is accommodated in via a number of trash rooms along the site. Given the configuration of the the triangular nature of the site, there's really three. The trash rooms that each work within the mass of of the triangular site. So we have one that is adjacent to the entrance, we have one kind of at the core of the building. And one planned south, towards the west of the of the of the building. And all three of these relate to really the three major masses of the building. And the intention being that the. The maintenance people would bring the trash from the trash rooms over to the main trash room. In which where the the trash would be taken away. This is a colored rendition of a one zero two, the same drawing, just a colored version of this. And this is depicting the first residential level. I guess this would be exhibit two. So, after people. Enter the building from the plan, northeast portion of the building, there is a two-story lobby, which brings. Which brings them up to the security desk, um, in which case, uh, behind them, they, they have, uh, the mailboxes. This is a, intention would be, this is a highly glazed, um, kind of storefront glazing that, uh, looks out to. The first level of the, the communal spaces. Really what we're trying to do is, is knit, um. Through a series of communal terraces, uh, provides. Continuous pathway around the site, um, with universal access so that people would be able to navigate. Throughout the building at the various levels, um, from these kind of communal spaces. So we have the, uh, mass here that fronts, uh, Wheeler Street, Wheeler, Wheeler Point Road. Um, and this is the majority of these are, are, are the one-bedrooms and I'll get into the, um, the configuration of, of the typical units. Um, after I kind of give a synopsis of the, of the project as a whole. Um, so towards the, there, there's a portion here which is a communal space, exterior, uh, grilling area here with some planting adjacent to that. Um, as they move, as, as people, uh, kind of can navigate towards their units in the rear. They, um, can, uh, look past and, and enjoy the, the seating area and, and terraces, um, with views towards the, uh, towards the city. As we move up, we can see the building configuration, I'm just gonna, okay, um. Is really, is these, uh, two to three, uh, masses that step back. As we move up higher in elevation to allow more light into the building. So here we see that, uh, planned northeast portion, we have, uh, our one-bedroom, some one-bedroom configuration units. With their private terraces that, that overlook the courtyard. Similarly, we have one-bedroom, uh, units that, uh, look plan north into the courtyard and they have projecting balconies. That allow the occupants to look east towards the city. And as we move up, we can see that the, uh, the terrace is kind of, they tier back. Um, really similar configuration in that we have the, the trash room over here. Uh, adjacent to the elevators. We have another trash, uh, toward, towards the, uh, center of the core of the building. And then another towards the plan, uh, west portion of the building. And as we move up, uh, fifth floor plan, we can see that the, the terraces, uh, continue to, to set back to allow more light into the building. Um, configuration is, is, is very similar and again, these units are, are for the most part replicated, uh, as you move up in the building. Aside from these terrorist units which do set back. So that happens both here and in the planned southeast portion. Sixth floor, so this sixth floor units, um, this is where we tried to differentiate the massing in, in, uh, trying to. Uh, take the redevelopment ordinance to heart and, and, um, try to. Play with the scale of the building to, uh, decrease the massing, uh, in that, um, the zoning ordinance is saying. That the above the, uh, fifth floor, that the massing should be set back five feet. Um, we use this opportunity to set this particular floor back seven feet to provide a little bit more di- uh, differentiation. Um, and, and, and usable terraces at this level. And then, uh, the floors, you'll see the floors above pop back out to, to eight feet and that, uh, helps that, that upper mass register a little bit more. The sixth floor. Seventh floor is similar, but here we have the, um, the massing, um, kind of completing itself and being a, a true bar building. And then the community space, internal community space, um, the, with the community room. That overlooks the green roof and exterior terrace for the, the, uh, the, uh, the development as a whole. Um, that looks east towards, towards New York. Uh, we have mechanical space adjacent to that with, that would be where the generator would be accommodated and, um, uh, housed in, within the equipment screen. And then as we get to the, um, uppermost level, these, this is where the, uh, units are a bit different in that they are duplex units. Um, they, for the mo- majority of them, they, they are lofted studios. Um, and let me go down to the floor below, just to give you a sense of how that works. Um, so these here would be, uh, an example of that where we have, uh, accommodations for. Um, uh, an accessible kitchen and ADA compliant kitchen and an ADA compliant bathroom at this level. Uh, in addition to that, um, one may, uh, use the stairs to go up to this upper level and have that lofted space above. So, um, really trying to bring some natural light into these spaces. Um, and so this, these would be duplex units that would, uh, wrap around the, uh, exterior roof deck. Um, and as you can see here, one of the comments that in the, uh, both the engineering and planning reports. Um, were to discuss, uh, how the HVAC units, um, for the project as a whole would be accommodated. Um, these, uh, mechanical units are, uh, behind an equipment screen. And we can provide, uh, details for that later. I, I have, in the renderings will be showing you. Um, they're essentially a perforated metal screen that are, uh, hidden behind, uh, some planting. So at this level, we have, um, the, uh, kind of an, an exterior seating lounge area. With planting and a pergola to provide some shade with views that, uh, from this kind of exterior dining area that can look both. Out to below of the, uh, courtyard below on this side as well as the plan west side, as well as the, uh, New York City beyond. So that is the, um, synopsis of, of the plans, uh, as a whole in terms of the, uh, the configuration. I will move on back to, uh, the initially submitted drawings, uh, which is what you, what was submitted. And touch, just touch on the lighting, um, the planner's report noted that one of the lighting fixtures. Uh, was missing and, and should be part of the calculation. That is true and, and we can comply with that. Um, and, uh, and, and update this accordingly. Um, a landscape plan showing the, uh, consideration of the various types of planting on the project to, uh. Be responsive of the different lighting conditions, uh, we, we chose plants based on where they were located. Both to provide, um, that were, they're salt and drought tolerant, but also shade tolerant, uh, in, in where, where needed as well. So here you can see the, there's a number of terraces, uh, that lead up to, um, up to the, uh. The various levels. Okay, so, um, I will now go to the elevations and then, um. Admittedly, the, there are a number of facades here, so, uh, I'll go through this quickly and then I'll, I'll go to the renderings because it's, it's more easily digestible. Um, the, the building as a whole, as you can see here, this is that sixth floor, floor, uh, above where it sets back. But the building is, um, considered, uh, to. Both respond to its context, uh, in, in being, um, uh. Comprised of, of metal panels, uh, from the first to the fifth floors and then the, uh. The extensive glazing on that sixth floor level where the, uh, the setback terraces are. And then the seventh and eighth floors, the, these two levels here are the, the duplex units. They are, uh, behind, um, some solar sunscreens. Um, they're highly glazed behind, behind it to maximize the views, but using the, the sunscreens to, uh. Decrease the solar, um, solar heat gain. Um, all the glass on the project will have a bird-safe frit. Um, and, uh, okay, so this is the, the Wheeler Point elevation trying to block up, uh, trying to. Break up the massing, um, where we have the, the lower levels. That was one of the, the comments on the, uh, the planner's report was the differentiation between the ground floor. And the upper floors as well as, uh, the, the desire to have screening. Between the, at the street level, uh, to, uh, enclose the, uh, the parking beyond. Uh, instead of, uh, we felt that instead of having a, a screen and having the building. Which would result in the building potentially looking like it was on stilts. Our, we're proposing to put, uh, storefront glazing essentially as display cases. Uh, that could have murals or artwork behind these and that would, um, have, develop a continuity in the facade. While also hiding the parking beyond. And that could be changed seasonally or, or, or monthly or that's, you know, something that can be worked through. Um, but as I said, the majority of the facade is, would be metal panels, the upper facade over here would be, uh, uh. Concrete panels, but, uh, fluted con- concrete panels. And then just these other facades that are facing, um, Del- Delancey Street, these interior courtyards. This facade here, again, metal panels, um, this is what is facing the railroad. Um, we attempted to, uh, address comments that were made earlier about, uh, you know, the proximity to. The railroad, um, and so we have, uh, kind of setback, um, balconies. Um, and, and are considering potentially at this location, at this facade, using, uh, triple glazing, um. To, uh, address, uh, this sound, uh, to dampen the sound. Okay, these are some interior courtyard elevations. And, and the sign, so, um, I'm going to bring up the, the renderings now and to give you a better sense of, of. The project, so, um, this is that, uh, Wheeler Street elevation. You can see here, uh, the, the sixth floor highly glazed terraces are set back. And then we have seven, uh, floors seven and eight, which are the duplexes above with the, the brise lay. Um, at the, uh, we tried to break up the massing where we have, um. It's, it's admittedly a large project, we tried not to force it to, uh, try to approximate a smaller project. We, we wanted to just acknowledge that it is a pro- a larger project and, and, and have the, the, uh, fenestration and the scale of, of the apertures. Uh, be appropriate for that. So this is, um, for Wheeler Street, um, looking towards the building. So behind here at the ground level would be, uh, the parking, but we were proposing to have murals behind the, the storefront. As a display case. And so this would be the entrance, we see the, um, Delancey Street, uh, right away here, the, the vacated paper street. With the, um, entry into the adjacent neighbor, um, something that, uh, just to kind of clarify in. In the massing is that the, the, the. Planned northeast portion of the building is tight to the property line. But we do set back to be five feet, um, and even more than five feet, uh, a- as we move, uh, south in the building. So here we can see the, uh, the kind of double height glazing for, um, that kind of captures two floors. And then we do have differentiation in, uh, some locations, this is, uh, between the, uh, the ground floor and the floors above. Using a, um, a kind of charcoal colored brick with the, the loading zone here with an, uh, attempt at some screening. So here we go, um, to, this is, uh, looking west at that courtyard. Um, we can see that the, uh, terrorist units are stepping back here to provide light. The projecting balconies are, uh, over here and, uh, with, to provide views towards New York City. With the, um, the, uh, communal space over here, uh, uh, that looks also, looks towards the city. So again, the intention was, would be to have, um, you know, we have a kind of site plan that kind of shows, uh, how people would navigate. But you would, you would be able to walk from the second floor, the first living level to these exterior spaces and then via an ADA compliant. Ramp, um, but they're essentially constructed berms up to the third level and navigate inside to the. The gym space and kind of navigate around the building, um, through, from communal space to communal space. Another shot, uh, showing the terrorist units, um, looking, I guess we're looking towards Wheeler Street now in the courtyard. With the private terraces here overlooking that, that ramp. This is looking towards New York City, uh, into that, that courtyard from one of the communal spaces. This is the railroad right of way here, um, and so we have these kind of, uh, alternating balconies. On that facade, um, and we have this other, uh, kind of grilling area with the, uh, communal spaces up above. This is from the grilling area looking, uh, through the building, um, with the intention being that there's, uh, visual continuity between. This co- this exterior communal space toward the other communal space that is underneath the, uh, the massing above. So here is, um, just kind of like an overall view using this at the second floor level. Sorry, excuse me, the second floor level would be here, people would navigate up around these ramps. And then to, through to other communal lounge areas outside. In, uh, towards the, uh, the gym that's inside, and then this would be the, uh, rooftop communal space. Another view with the, the generator there. So, um, if you'd like, I can go through the, the unit types, um, in more detail. Uh, there's, there's a fair amount of them because, you know, as you can see, the geometry did require, um. Some changes to, to, to some units, um, so if you'd like, I can, I can walk through that as well, but.
I'm gonna ask you to hold off on that unless something asked, because there are over thirty, I believe, unit types here, so.
Yes, that's true, yeah.
I'm, I'm mindful of the board's time.
So if you could show us. What, uh, a studio, show us a one-bedroom, show us two and that special three.
Absolutely, we'll do, yes, okay, so. This is, you can see here, so this, this, this studio unit, um, is, uh, used often. And, um, so there is, as you would walk in, you'd have a coat closet, you'd have an ADA compliant, uh, bathroom. With this, uh, uh, the shower, um, you'd have, uh, your, your refrigerator, your sink and your, um. Uh, stove and, and oven here, um, these would be ADA compliant with the, with the thought being that. The, uh, there would be potentially a Murphy bed or a pull-out sofa, um, here for that living space and, and, um. So the majority of the units are using the, the, uh, V T A Cs for heating and cooling. These particular units, these studios, uh, the intention would be to have, uh, mini splits. Um, our plans are showing the locations of the condensing units for these units, uh, for these mechanical units, uh, on the roof. So that's, that's a, a studio. I will go to, um, a typical one-bedroom. These one-bedrooms are, um. This one in particular is, is the, the unit type that would be used facing the, the, uh, the railroad right away. So we can see that there is a kind of setback balcony here, um, the V-TAC unit here for heating and air conditioning. And then we have, uh, the kitchen, uh, walking into washer and dryer and the water heater closet over here. With some storage, uh, here and, um, uh, another, uh, kind of, another bathroom that would be. Um, ADA compliant, so, um, every, every unit, uh, is ADA compliant. And so, let's go to a two-bedroom. Trying to find one that would be. Or actually, I'm sorry, but I'm, can actually go use the, uh, the three-bedroom, which I think. So this is, um, this is a two-bedroom unit here that's used in a number of places, um, you would walk into the, uh. The, the unit and have, uh, a kitchen with an, uh, uh, U-shaped kitchen here with two bedrooms flanking a living room in the middle. Um, each bedroom minimum dimension, uh, we tried to not make less than ten foot six, this one in particular is ten foot seven, um. Another two-bedroom unit here with, uh, bedroom and, and this, this would be one that is on the plan south mass. Um, that fronts, uh, New York City or places. Okay, and then. The three-bedroom, I apologize, the three-bedroom is tough to find.
It's at the bottom.
Oh, is it? Oh, it's hidden by the, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So, um, as you would walk into the three-bedroom unit, uh, you'd have the kitchen, um. This is, uh, and I can, I can locate this on the plan, but, um, the, this unit has two baths. One from, one for the, uh, the primary bedroom with the, uh, the closet here, um, and then two. Uh, two bedrooms with a minimum dimension of ten-six and the living space of, of twelve foot by, by eighteen feet here. And then to touch on the, the duplex unit, I think I did this before, but just to give you a sense again, um. So this would be the, the lower elevation of the duplex unit. Uh, you would have an ADA compliant shower and, um, stair a- and, and similar. Uh, you would have an ADA compliant shower and um stair and and similar to the studio units, um similar configuration. Um, where we have the really essentially duplication of the of the of the studio kitchen and and a Murphy bed here. Um, and then you would walk up those steps to the upper level uh where you would have a a mezzanine level that would look to the two-story height space below.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, which I turn it over to questions uh for other members of the the board, if you will?
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions for our architect, Mr. Musial?
Madam Chair, if I may, just to clear up the exhibits before you
Yeah, would this be a, right?
So I have exhibit A one as the architectural plan, which is pages A one zero one through A one zero nine. And then I have exhibit A two as the rendering with ten slides. Does this sound right, Mr. Soder?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bayes, Mr. Amasai Musial, if you could give us the um screen, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. That's Commissioner Bayes.
Yeah, I I I gotta get a comment. It looks beautiful, okay? But my come, I didn't I didn't hear nobody tell me why it's only one three-bedroom apartment there? What is so huge? Please, somebody tell me why it's only one three-bedroom?
Give Mr. Bayes, I've I've I'll jump in uh to that one, if you will, uh but I think that would go towards just general comments. Um but I would say to you, in this type of development, you typically don't have families who want to move into these developments. You end up with more a much more transient population. Um, so the studios and one bedrooms are typical for buildings like this. And as you see new construction, you know, if you go to Jersey City, New York City, and all these places, you see those big, beautiful buildings. It would be a similar rubric, mainly because that three-bedroom would be so expensive typically. Right? Now, if we got into doing a spire and all of those other things, you might be able to find some some other money that would be there. But typically with these developments, you just don't don't see the three bedrooms. What what happens is to folks will typically move someplace else. They start thinking about saving money more, right? So if I if I need, if me and my wife are there and I got two, three kids, right? I'm not necessarily living a more transient lifestyle. I'm typically looking for a little patch of grass someplace, a little bit more space because you don't want siblings beating up each other in rooms. I don't know about you, but I had a lot of siblings, so we fought in those small rooms in the small apartments that we had growing up here in Newark, right? Um, but as we change, right, I want you to think about how we've come, Newark has come a long way. And there's a different group of folks who we would like to remain here, right? Uh, and come back here once they go to college. And it's typical for there to be younger more transient folks who are going to have the disposable income to be able to live in these types of developments. Now, we are setting aside a certain number so that uh there's affordable housing included in this. Um, but you don't
We need some more. You know, I like the project, but please don't get used to it. We need three-bedroom apartment.
Right, but you usually will see those though. That I don't know, Mr. Commissioner Bayes, if you've noticed, when you see folks building three families and two families, those typically are more or more aligned with three bedrooms. You don't usually see one-bedroom, three-family projects, right? Because you don't see single folks wanting to move into that product. They don't care about the patch of grass because they had to borrow all the time, right? So it there's there's this, there there is kind of a schedule that we look at in coming up with these projects where these these three-bedroom units are just not something that we rent. If you were to go into Jersey City, I hear my my wife complain about it all the time. She builds new buildings in Jersey City. And they end up stuck, right? The city says, we want you to build X amount of three-bedroom units. And then nobody wants it. And nobody will move into it, right? Because
Well, I'll move over there and make me another one.
But you what you probably wouldn't want a three-bedroom. You probably want a studio or a one-bedroom, right?
Well, I'd have three kids, so.
But it's the price point, though.
That's that's a question, the price point, yeah, right?
Right. Right, so we we like this.
Keep it continuing. Uh, I I love it. I love the project. Congratulations. Let's go. Let's go.
All right. Are there any other questions from commissioners for this uh for the architect?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Commissioner James.
Uh, s- sorry, but I probably um, you know, I I lost connection, so I'm not sure if this was addressed, but what was the materials of the facade?
It's mostly uh metal?
Metal composite, like what type, what type of uh?
Yeah, so Noel, you want to tell exactly?
Uh, yeah, so um ACM um metal composite uh panels. Um, and the upper levels were the thought being that they would be uh kind of a a precast concrete panel that would have a fluted texture to it. So uh kind of a a series of ribs. Uh vertically oriented ribs for the concrete panels.
Okay, got it. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Your next professional?
Madam Vice Chair, I I do not have another professional for you. I
Are you serious? You didn't have traffic?
I do not have traffic. We are not seeking a a parking variance uh in this scenario, so we do not believe that it was necessary for us to have a traffic rip. But I do have some, if there's questions about traffic, not that I was gonna put someone to testify per se. We do have someone available who can answer questions around traffic.
Well, I really have a question with regards to coming in and out of that development. It's tighter than it can be in that area.
So with that, I I believe Christian, you, someone from your office was prepared to speak on parking and traffic?
Um, no one from my office. Uh, that wasn't me, I don't believe.
I'm sorry.
Mister uh counsel, I think these, I guess the questions are about the ingress and egress of uh of the site.
Correct. And I believe Christian can answer those questions.
Yeah, um in in regards, I believe there was a comment regarding uh like a right, like a write-in, write-out type deal. I I think I don't think the applicant has any issues with doing a type of restriction uh going out of that property um in terms of possibly helping uh with the with the with any potential traffic issues that, you know, the construction of the site might might cause. But uh as uh Mr. Soder said, uh, we meet the amount of parking spaces required for this project and um, that also doesn't take into account that uh might be a good amount of people who might be using mass transit as well. So.
And we, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, not to to interrupt him, but we do have Connor Hughes on who prepared a report as well.
Okay. Mister Hughes, do you see him? Mister Hughes, if you could raise your hand, please.
He's on, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Mister Hughes. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give shall be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Certainly. Uh, my name is Connor Hughes, C O N N O R, last name H U G H E S. I am the traffic engineer for the applicant.
Good evening, Mister Hughes. Is your license current and in good standing?
Yes, it is.
All right. If you could just give us a brief overview of what your um report is with regards to the traffic in and out and around this project.
Sure. Um, so we did submit a traffic impact study uh stated August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, so it has been some time. Um, but I will just go through our our findings very quickly. Um, we did do traffic counts at the intersection of Wheeler Point Road and Delancey Street right next to the project. Um, and we found that the levels of service there with and without the site traffic were um essentially the same. All levels of service, As and Bs, um mainly because it's, you know, this is kind of a dead-end area. There's not really a lot of through traffic through there, obviously. Um, so it's levels of service-wise, traffic volume-wise. Um, there are no foreseeable issues with that. Um, for as far as the trip generation in and out of the site. Uh, we looked at the I T E trip generation based on the number of units, which in the morning projects one hundred and eighteen trips and in the afternoon projects one hundred and fifteen trips. Um, again, this level of trip generation based on the traffic counts that we found in the area. Um, when we add the background growth, add these traffic volumes, we found that the level of service results and the um the capacity of these intersections um can more than handle the the particip- the um anticipated traffic for the for the project. Um, and as I mentioned, it is a couple of years old, but even with that additional background growth from two years ago to now, there's still plenty of reserved capacity to to account for that extra growth. Um, so we don't feel that that the results would be any si- would be really significantly different than if we were to do counts um today. And as you mentioned, as was mentioned multiple times, we did meet, we do meet the parking requirement as well based on the redevelopment plan. Um, so we don't foresee any, you know, undue hardship on the the street parking in the area or anything of that nature. We feel that the onsite parking is more than sufficient to um support the the project. But if there's any specific questions regarding the traffic flows or, you know, the ingress in and out, anything like that, I'm I'm happy to to oblige any questions.
All right, thank you. Uh, commissioners, do any of you have any questions for Mister Hughes? All right, seeing none, and given that this was the end of your professional testimony, can we open it up? If there are any members of the public who have any questions with regards to this application, please press raise hand, or if you're calling in, press star nine.
Seeing none of this, oh, actually, we have, no, we have one.
Good evening, Ms. Garner. If you can, um mute and turn on your camera.
Well, I can't turn on my camera right now, but I could definitely speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Garner. Do you solemnly swear the testimony that you're about to give shall be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tanisha Garner, uh fifty-five Oxford Street, Newark, New Jersey, zero seven one zero five.
Thank you.
Um, um, good evening, everyone. Um, I just have several questions. Uh, I see that in the report that the, I know it's in the Ironbound, especially Delancey Street. And it is eight minutes away from Newark Energy, and it's also three minutes away from PVSC. And I'd just like to know what is the community impacts that the community is going to face? Uh, especially with this new development and existing development. And especially, I know where Hurricane Sandy hit. Um, that area was definitely prone to um flooding issues. And and when you look at the zoning in that particular area, it it's it's, I believe, like one to three stories. So why are they building a seven-story building within a two to three-story zoning? Um, uh, I I guess within that area. And also I I know you mentioned about um it's only one three-bedroom apartments. And I I guess what is the the price range from the studio, the one and a two? Especially when you look at the city of Newark and how a lot of these developments are not, I guess, gearing across the spectrum of families and how families are being displaced. And especially with the income, I know um the attorney mentioned about uh how they're, I I guess they're gearing for, I guess, college students or like um professionals. But do the professionals know that community impact or the environmental impact that they're going to be facing, especially in the Ironbound where it consists of, uh, you know, different type of cancers that a lot of our residents have? So and and I think that's, you know, that's something major to think about. And is there any way that did they also do like a community meeting to discuss with the community how this is going to impact them? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garner.
Uh, thank you. I I would just, you know, to try to address a a few of these things, I'll I'll start with uh the displaced families issue that was brought up that I know is a great concern here in the city. Um, I think we should start with the fact that this is a vacant lot that traditionally has been used for industrial purposes. Um, so we talk about that community impact and and particularly um from a health perspective. This particular project will be able to actually improve the health standards in this particular community because rather than have more eighteen-wheelers using the site um to sit industrial goods on, right? We'll we'll have a a human purpose there um and people living there, which will significantly clean up this area. When you talk about the um flooding in the area and we talk about Sandy, um, a lot of folks don't know uh that there has been tens of millions of dollars of infrastructure work done in that neighborhood. Particularly um the PVSC and other large industrial companies that sit on the water um have done that work. And it would be incumbent upon us to ensure, um and particularly looking at the city's water and sewer plants um and and the upgrades that have been done to ensure that this project doesn't uh suffer from many of the ills. But it's also partly why we do have a a ground level of parking um o- on this particular site. But for from an overall community standpoint, this will provide for a significant a significant upgrade uh in in the the infrastructure piece as well as uh health piece. Um, and as noted in terms of the height significance, um as you guys looked at the survey, you see that this is a triangular shaped square block that sits right up against the railroad. So this will be sitting off from the residential homes that currently exist there. It could be a good nod to the Ironbound, but a great use of space and what otherwise has been one of the worst areas in terms of eyesores that tend to pop up left and right. So from something nice for them to be able to see, from a health perspective, we believe these are all benefits that have happened to you. Um, similarly, uh when you talk about the community being impacted, there was a redevelopment plan that was done, that was put together by the city. Uh, and we believe as that was being put together, uh the city did what it normally does in terms of the community meetings to get to a redevelopment plan. Um, there there was a redevelopment plan done for this site. And looking at the municipal land use laws here in the state of New Jersey, there was a, the reason for that is to make better use of certain parcels that we have in our city. Um, and that's what happened here, and we got the best and highest use out of that. Um, and I just remind folks, these this this project is not something that we normally see here in our city. You know, for years, as we watched our city begin to develop, we've seen folks build, you know, um from from one property line to the next property line and built it so that they could fit as many units as humanly possible. You look at this development, we didn't square this off and go from one line to the other. There is significant architectural integrity that was put into this, right? We don't normally get a chance to see this. And and then another environment, we would turn around and say that a development like this isn't for a community like ours. And now it is, it's here. It's upon us. And because it's something that is new, it it's something that is different than we're used to. So we we start thinking about, well, we want to see three three-bedroom units, not understanding that the economics and the desire for that in a property like this just doesn't exist to the level that we may want to believe. Um, so these these, it's different, yeah. We also just haven't seen somebody go out of their way to give up square footage so that you can still have a view, right? It's 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 a a little bit different, but I challenge folks to find a development in our city where you have a garden in the middle of the project that you can walk from one floor to the next utilizing a landscaped walkway where we have the green roofs that we're looking for, that a thought process was put into hiding the AC, the air conditioning units, so that we could accom- accommodate sustainability, right? So one thing that was missed, we 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 put P-Tech units in the windows, right? Or in the 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 facade of the bu- building. Or in the 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 facade of the bu- building in order to accommodate a very sustainable, green environment. Right? So, you know, I understand this isn't typical, it's a little something new and we're really pushing the envelope here. But I think this is exactly what we were talking about and people have been talking about. When we say we want our city to be different, when we say we want something to be changed. When we say we want those things that so many of our babies leave home to go and get, right? So many of our babies leave for college and don't have any desire to come back here because there's nothing here they want to come back to. They want to go to cities that have buildings like this in abundance. We're still at the very beginning and I I would implore this board, and I appreciate the concerns because those are real concerns. We are um uh following the inclusionary zoning. This is a little bit something different, but I think it's different in the right direction. I think it's different in what we all really, really want when we talk to ourselves. Um I think this difference is the difference in, you know, I remember uh some time ago, we approved a liquor store downtown. Where we had a whole conversation around bulletproof glass, right? Versus these upscale liquor stores like the city wineries that exist now, that are beautiful liquor stores that sell. Six, seven hundred dollar bottles of wine, our people deserve to have that option here in our city. Um and I know we're just not used to seeing it, and I implore this board to vote for this. So I thank you for hearing me. I was a little bit long-winded on that, uh Vice Chair. I apologize, um but.
You broke it down, but one piece that you missed that she asked about is the price point. I think that it's fair to, you know, air that out as well.
Um I'm being told that the price point would be or from a market rate perspective, anywhere between eighteen hundred to three thousand dollars. Which is cheaper than downtown.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Half the price in New York, at least half.
Thank you, Ms. Garner, for all those thoughtful questions. Um do we have any other questions from any members of the public?
Seeing none at this time, Madam Chair.
All right, so we need someone to present a motion with regards to this application, remembering that we uh stipulated air quality as a condition of approval. By Commissioner Baez, seconded by Commissioner Scott Rowntree. Roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Disova.
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Rowntree?
Yes.
Commissioner Baez?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, um cheers.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chair Richardson is on, my apologies.
I, I'm a yes, and I bid you a good night.
Good night, Chair.
Thank you all so much for your time this evening. We greatly appreciate it and we 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 thank, we we thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
All right, take care of those plants. All right, number five. C P B twenty-four sixty-two, the address is three sixty-four through three seventy-four Broadway. The applicants, please raise your hands so we can bring you in.
All right, I'm here.
All right, good evening, Mr. Hockaday.
Good evening to the members of the board. Uh I am Steve Hockaday of Hockaday Law, representing the applicant, three seventy-four Broadway A L L C. Uh the applicant here, Mr. Sosa, has a stellar reputation in Newark and beyond, using quality materials. Reinvigorating and beautifying neighbor neighborhoods while remaining in touch with the ambition of the city and the needs of the residents. Today, we're presenting a proposal for a development located at three sixty-four dash three seventy-four Broadway. This project consists of a forty-unit mixed-use building with retail and parking. And seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and seat variance relief. Uh the the proposed development is located within the regional commercial C three zone. It includes twenty-one parking spaces with some variances and waivers required to ensure the project's success. Specifically, we are seeking variances related to parking, building coverage, and transparency. All of which will be addressed in today's presentation. Uh with joy and uh without re- reservation, this project will help fulfill the city's inclusionary zoning goals by setting aside twenty percent affordable housing within the development. Uh we are in receipt of memos uh prepared for this board. Uh an engineering report dated February sixth, two thousand twenty-five, a planning report dated February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. A water and sewer report dated February twenty-fourth uh of this year. Uh I believe we can comply with all the issues stated in those reports, and our professionals tonight will give testimony uh addressing the comments contained therein, as well as general testimony, giving uh the audience a a flavor for the proposed development. Uh I'd like to uh introduce the project team in uh in the order that you'll hear from them. Um these professionals have been uh integral in preparing these plans and addressing the technical and design considerations. Uh so uh we have John Manillo uh of Mantara Design, Mark Bess is our architect with BlackBerry Studios. Lee Klein is our traffic expert, and Nick Graviano uh of Graviano Gill's uh Architects and Planners is our planner. Uh so that's the team. Uh Madam Chair, uh if it's your will, uh we will get started with our engineer.
Thank you.
Uh so uh we need uh John Manillo.
He's uh. Ms. Manilio, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Sure, uh legal name is Giovanni, G I O V A N N I, last name Manilio, M A N I L I O. Uh president with Mantara Design and the civil engineer on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Manilio. Uh talk about your qualifications and your relation uh to this this project.
Sure, I have a bachelor of science from Syracuse University. Um I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey for the past sixteen years, licensed is in good standing. Uh testified in front of numerous boards throughout the state, including the boards uh on numerous occasions. And I've um prepared and supervised the uh preparation of these plans.
We may proceed with your testimony.
Sure, I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay. Um let me know when you can see my screen.
We can see it.
Perfect. All right, so what I'm going to refer to is I have two exhibits tonight, as well as the uh site plans that were submitted as part of the application. Uh the first exhibit is entitled three sixty-four, three seventy-four Broadway. Um it's called an aerial um overlay um with the date of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Mark this as a, is this A one, I'm assuming?
Exhibit A one, yes.
Sure. Um so this is colored um aerial of the general vicinity with the zoning designations shown in purple. And the property located in the middle in yellow. Um so the subject site is is unique in nature. Um it has actually three frontages, uh frontages on Broadway, which is a county road. Uh Nursery Street, which is a city-owned street, and then there's a a natural right-of-way um entitled Wilburton Place, which is a variable right-of-way. Um it varies, I believe, from eleven feet to twenty feet, um essentially almost like an alleyway on the one side of the property. Uh the property is located in the C three zone, which is a commercial regional zone. Um and it's approximately thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty square feet, or point three one acres. Um and currently, it consists of an auto repair uh facility, um as you see here, with a single-story building. Uh multiple curb cuts off of Nursery Street and and Broadway, and several pre-existing non-conformities, um including setbacks. Um shade, no shade trees, uh chain-link fence, um overage on impervious coverage. Um driveway curb cuts and dimensions and um lighting. Uh the property is not located in a flood zone, um and no other um D E P environmental constraints are um known at this time. Next exhibit that I am going to go to is entitled three sixty-four, three seventy-four Broadway. Uh site rendering with a date of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. It's a color uh site rendering of the site plan uh with the landscaping shown and the zoning data as well. Uh what's being proposed on the site is a uh five-story mixed-use building uh with a total of forty units. Um I'll leave it to the architect to give a breakdown of the number of units and uh the number of bedrooms for the um the units. Uh along Nursery Street, we do have the uh main residential lobby uh and amenity space. Uh along with uh building amenities as far as utilities, stairs, and elevators. Uh along Broadway's street side is where we have a commercials um floor area over here on the corner. Um right now, it's it's just designated as commercial. Um it could be retail or office. Um either way, the parking requirements will be met. Um or there there is no parking requirement, I'm sorry, for the retail or commercial, as it's under the threshold for parking space. Uh additionally, we do have a a community room and other amenities, including a stair tower, a trash room. And bike storage and additional utility space on the um Broadway side. Uh the main driveway, we're proposing one driveway into and out of the site. It'll be a two-way driveway off of Broadway, which is again a county road. Um we are proposing a driveway that is twenty-four feet in width, uh where I believe twenty feet is permitted per the city ordinance. Uh so we are asking for a design waiver. Uh we feel that the additional width in the driveway will provide uh better turning movements for vehicles coming in and out of the site. And will have no detriment to the uh the general public or. Uh additionally, so it's twenty-four feet up until you get to the garage door. The garage door um initially was sixteen feet. It has been expanded and is now twenty feet, so it's in accordance with the um city ordinance as far as width of a driveway at the garage door. And then as you get into the building, we do have a driveway that's twenty-four feet in width. Uh we do have um nineteen physical parking spaces within the building. Of those nineteen spaces, fifteen of them, the um nine on the um the upper portion and the six on the lower portion conform with the dimensions for um parking spaces. Um they're all either nine by eighteen or eight by eighteen for um A D A. Uh where the city ordinance requires eight and a half by eighteen. Uh we are proposing on this um south side of the building uh four parking spaces that are slightly less than the requirement. Um again, eight and a half by eighteen is required. Uh these spaces, we have two that are eight by nineteen, and we have two that are eight point three by nineteen. So two of them are slightly less and uh two are less by six inches. Of the uh nineteen physical parking spaces, we are proposing one A D A space and three E V spaces. Uh one of them will be installed prior to C E O, um and the other two will be installed within six years in accordance with uh state regulations. Um for this development, forty spaces, parking spaces are required. That's all contributed to the um residential portion of the project. Again, the commercial space and or office space in the corner um does not require any parking as it's under uh twenty-five hundred square feet. We're proposing eleven uh micro-mobility parking spaces inside this bike storage room. Uh they all comply with the city requirements, and they're two by six in dimensions, and we'll label that on the plans. As far as trash collection, there is a designated trash room, so the garbage from the upper floors will be brought down um through the chutes and then go into this trash room. Uh there will be a a property manager that will bring the trash from the room into a designated refuse area within the um building or in the garage portion of the building. Um that consists of a refuse area is approximately twenty-one feet by sixteen feet. Uh could fit um both of the refuges and a recycling container in there as well. Uh we are proposing a solid wall along um all perimeters, except the front that faces the driveway. Um I know there was a request or uh there might be a design waiver for not having a gate in the front. Uh we are asking for that waiver. It is fully contained. It's it it's in a garage. It's not visible from the street. And the sites that are visible from the the uh adjoining property lines will be walled and screened uh accordingly. Additional site features that we are proposing, we are proposing a stormwater system. It's an underground stormwater system. I'll show it on the plans. So this is the site plan that we're submitting as part of the application, uh consists of an underground system uh with a final discharge within Nursery Street. Again, we'll work with both the um engineering department and water and sewer to make sure that we comply with the uh stormwater requirements. Uh we were able to um revise the plans to have uh pretty much all the utilities come off of Nursery Street. Uh we are proposing to repave the entire frontage of Nursery Street. Um and in conjunction with another project, we are actually upgrading the uh water main as well on Nursery Street. Uh we have one connection, a gas connection off of Broadway, and as you can see, that the connection is roughly about three feet off the curb line. Uh landscaping, I'll go back to the rendering, consists of, we're showing eight street trees or shade trees. Um which are required along Nursery and Broadway. Um obviously, we'll work with the engineering department and the city arborist to make sure that we are out of any sightlines. Um and if for some reason we can't plant all the trees, we will play, pay a contribution in lieu of. Um additionally, there was a comment, um essentially, Wilburton Place is a is technically a right-of-way um shown here. Again, right now, it's it's consists of stone, uh dirt, and and broken asphalt. Um there's approximately the nine and a half feet uh between our property line and the adjoining residential uh uh building. Uh we are asking a waiver so there or or relief, uh I guess, on planting the trees. We we four trees are required along Wilburton Place. Um essentially, there's no room to put them. Obviously, we'll work with the city arborist, and if there is room to plant them, we will plant them. Uh if not, we will be paying a contribution in lieu of um for those four trees. Additionally, four onsite trees are required. Um the original application had no onsite trees. I believe the board planner had requested that there is enough room here uh to plant uh some trees. And we did plant two trees. So on the next set of plans that are submitted, uh we are providing two onsite trees. But we are still seeking relief where four are required. Uh the remaining areas that are not paved or or concrete or sidewalk will be uh lawn areas. Um lighting for the the project consists of uh uh lighting within the building. So we have canopy lights inside the garage uh in compliance with the city ordinance. And then we do have lighting that are building-mounted. Uh we did have two uh variances that that were brought up for lighting. Uh both of which we will eliminate as part of the uh uh agreement as condition of approval. Uh one of them is we had uh illumination levels, I think of point five foot candles. That was right here at this entrance where the utility room is. Uh again, we can revise that to make it one foot candle. And then we had mounting height, um and you'll see on the architectural renderings, we have two rows of lights. We have row of light along um the street level, along the building to provide the illumination. And then there was lights mounted higher up uh thirty-one feet uh where twenty feet is permitted, and that was more of an accent light. Uh we did do an analysis, and if we remove the the lights on the above or move them lower, we would still be in compliance with the lighting levels. Uh so in any event, we're gonna either uh eliminate the upper row of lights or lower them to be consistent with the um city ordinance for mounting height. Um and that pretty much wraps up the site improvements. I'll go over the variances and zoning performance real quickly. Uh so we are asking for some relief, um one of them being the side yard setback uh along the south property line. Um a ten-foot uh side yard is required, where we do have a zero-foot uh setback for a portion of the building. You can see right here, and then it steps back to that ten-foot line. Uh lot coverage, eighty percent is permitted by building, uh where we have a coverage of ninety-five percent. Uh impervious lot coverage, um eighty-five percent is permitted by the ordinance. Um ninety-six point six percent is proposed, um and ninety-seven point three percent is existing. So there's a slight decrease in coverage on the site from what's there today. Um there's four variances for building transparency, which will be um discussed by the architect of the project. Uh we are asking for relief on number of parking spaces. Uh again, forty are required. Where we're providing nineteen physical spaces, and with the E V credit, um we get up to twenty-one parking spaces. So we're still uh deficient by nineteen spaces, uh but our traffic engineer could talk about the parking study that was done and the um supply. But our traffic engineer could talk about the parking study that was done and the supply of parking in the general vicinity. We are still asking for relief on onsite trees. Four are required, where two are being proposed. We're asking, I'm not sure if it's relief, it's more of, we're either gonna plant the four trees on Wilburton or provide the contribution in lieu of. And then the last one was actually called out by the board planner was a buffer that's required along the non-residential side of the building on the south side. A buffer is required where no buffer is being proposed. Again, I think in this situation, we are next to a non-residential building. It has no effect on the non-residential portion of it. We are proposing a four-foot fence along this side, which I believe the ordinance allows a fence in lieu of a buffer. That wraps up the variances in site plan overview. If there's any questions by the board, if not, I do have. I didn't have a chance to review the board professional letter. We have no issues with the board planners comments. As far as Mr. Trafficante's comments, I do have two that I want to bring up. Pretty much could comply with 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 all of them except for two that we want to discuss. And that's the full milling and paving of both Broadway and Wilburton. So for Broadway, again, that's a county road. I know that the the city could ask for improvements on that as well. But the only, like I had mentioned earlier, the only improvement or connection that we have is a gas connection that's three feet off the curb line. We went out of our way to make sure that all the utilities came off of Nursery Street. So we're we're asking not to mill and pave the entire Broadway Street along the frontage. And then the other request was to mill and pave Wilburton Place. Right now, I don't know if it's clear on the aerial. Let me see if I can bring it up on A one. So it is city-owned. It's zoned park and open space. And last time I checked, the the alleyway was actually blocked off with concrete blocks to prevent people from going back there. So I'm not sure milling and paving it, what that would would satisfy as far as access to the back. If it seems like the the whole purpose is to prevent access to the back until there is a plan in place to utilize that that lot. So that's that's the two two items that we're we're asking for. That we're not looking to comply with as far as the city's engineers letter.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manilio. Mr. Trafficante, yes, I see your hands back up.
Yes, ma'am.
You have to go ahead and ask your question.
All right. You're still under oath.
Thank you. Mr. Manilio, I trust you have a copy of the Department of Engineers' report to the planning board dated February sixth?
Correct.
Oh, I'm sure. Now, February from long, is this a mixed-use building?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything prohibiting customers who come to visit the retail or commercial stores from using the parking garage?
I'm going to defer to the architect, but I'm assuming that this site has some type of card reader or some type of access control into the garage.
You don't know, sir?
At that, I don't know. I didn't design the building itself.
Well, on that point, are you aware of mixed use is considered commercial and driveway apron is supposed to be twenty-four feet wide?
We do have twenty-four foot wide.
But your garage door, is it? Can you make your garage door twenty-four feet wide, comply with the code and meet the driveway apron and the aisle?
I don't believe, again, I'll defer to the architect, but looking at the architectural plans and looking at the size of it, I don't believe we can make a twenty-four-foot door fit there.
Oh, if not, you're gonna need relief, right?
So then we will be asking for relief from the board.
Now, in the, I guess, southwest corner is where you're keeping your recyclables and solid waste, right?
Correct.
Is that gonna be vermin and rodent protected?
Yes.
Because you said there would be no gate or any enclosure, or will there be?
If that's what we need to do to comply with the rodent protection, then we will.
Yeah, and is that exposed to the sky above? Is that protected from the weather, snow, rain?
It is. It's covered by building. Yes.
All right. And, okay. Otherwise, the other, all the comments in the engineers' report you can comply with, except for the request. Again, County of Essex may make you pay Broadway, which means you've got no choice, right? Agree?
Obviously, if the county requires it, we'll want to work with them on that.
And Wilburton, right now, I know it's an alleyway, but if it comes a point in time, I'm thinking the Department of Engineering may want to recommend to the board that as a condition of approval, when it comes time to expand that road, because there are a bunch of lots back in there. I think it's a park for now, at least to a park, but there's like ten or twelve lots back in there if those are ever developed.
There is, yeah, ten or twelve lots. I don't know if it's a park. I think it's more of a parking lot at the moment. A lot of cars back there. Yeah.
At one time, it was considered to be a park. So nevertheless, would your client be willing to pay his fair share to make improvements to that Wilburton Street when, if and when the time comes along the frontage, whatever fronts his property?
So but I can get back to you by the end of this meeting. I'd like to reach out to the applicant. I can't speak on his behalf. But yes, we could definitely get back to you before the end of the meeting.
All right. Let us know if he's willing to do that, to pay his fair share.
No problem.
Yes, the applicant will be willing to pay his fair share regarding that when the time comes. It's no problem.
You know, should it be to pave it, mill it, pave it, curb it? Definitely probably have to curb it, at least for now, if you stole more of your property, right, from flowing down that alleyway. Okay, so things like that. There's no room for sidewalk, I'm aware. All right, that's obvious. At a minimum, for now, you may need to put in curbing there to keep water from flowing onto your site. All right.
And you know, the architect will give testimony when he's sworn in next, but I, you know, I do believe he may be able to get a twenty-four-inch door there. I mean, twenty-four foot. So we'll have him, we'll rely on his testimony, though.
Otherwise, Mr. Manilio, can you comply with all the requirements for his site lighting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Otherwise, everything else except those two items you mentioned earlier, but milling and resurfacing Broadway and milling and resurfacing Wilburton you can comply with in the engineer.
That that is correct, Mr. Trafficante.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trafficante. Your next witness, Mr. Hockaday?
The next witness is Mr. Mark Bess, BlackBerry Studios.
Good evening, Mr. Bess. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give to this board should be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
My name is Mark. Last name is Bess. That's B E S S. My affiliation is the principal of BlackBerry Studios, and we are the architect for for this project.
Mr. Bess, can you list your professional qualifications for purposes of being qualified by this board?
Certainly. Licensed to practice architecture in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and active. I've been in practice for about over twenty-five years now, and I have testified before this body previously on numerous occasions.
Thank you, Mr. Bess. You're accepted by the board and can proceed with your testimony.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm going to share my screen. And I'm gonna look away at my screen for a second. Okay, can everyone see the screen?
Yes, we can see.
Okay, perfect. So as Mr. Manilio mentioned, this project is a five-floor mixed-use building. And I'm going to walk us through each of the floors, the elevations, the materials, and some of the features of this of this project. So as you see on the screen, this is kind of, this is our rendering corner shot. I also have several other renderings that I'm going to include as exhibits. So moving on, on the ground floor, as Mr. Manilio stated, we have toward the front of the building, our main entry. We have amenity spaces. We have the commercial space. We have our elevator stairs and an amenity space. We're thinking this might be a gym over here in the corner. And this might be some type of community room with this commercial space here. Trash room stairs. On the far end, we have bike storage and utility. And I think right now you could see the space that we've designated for the garage. As our attorney had mentioned, we do have ample space to give a twenty-four-foot-wide door. It's very simply changing some of this area right over here or the bike storage area. We can move things around. Not a problem. I believe we can make that work. So I want to mention that for the record. Trash area back in the corner, as Mr. Manilio mentioned. In terms of Mr. Trafficante's question about parking and whether these parking spaces will be utilized for commercial activities, I'm not clear on that at this moment. I believe as we, as was mentioned, that most of these spaces, at least in our planning, were designated for residential tenants. So whether they're going to be utilized for other purposes, I believe, is a building management issue. But currently, our our directive was that these would be for building tenant purposes only with some type of secure entrance with the garage door. Moving on, a brief description of this building, once we get beyond the first floor. This building is going to have floors two through five, which will be all the same. A total of forty units as broken down as follows. We're going to have eight one-bedroom units, eight two-bedroom units, and twenty-four three-bedroom units. Our client and our team firmly believes that three-bedroom units are, in fact, a benefit to the community, and we are encouraging that type of use in this project. So I want to be very clear on that one. What I've done is, this is a typical floor plan, and I've highlighted a typical one, two and three-bedroom unit. So I'm going to change my screen a little bit and zoom in on each of these for a moment. So let me get that straight. And zoom in first to a typical one-bedroom unit. So these units, on the one-bedroom side, average between six hundred and seven hundred and seventy or so square feet on average. And as I mentioned to you earlier, there are eight of these. Each unit will have, I'm sorry, this is a two-bedroom unit. I apologize. I zoomed in on the wrong one. I certainly wasn't paying much attention here. My bad. Here's a one-bedroom here. My my bad. Each unit has a kind of an open living space. Alcove kitchen. Each unit has its own washer-dryer, water heater with a fully accessible bathroom. Closet space for common space, common closet space, bedroom and two closets. I had saw the one and I thought it said one bedroom, so I apologize. Let's look at this two, this three, this two-bedroom here. In this unit, we have an entry, again, with your water heater, washer-dryer. You have your ADA compliant bathroom and two bedrooms with a large open space. And since I highlighted it, that was nine hundred and forty-five square feet. This two-bedroom is a little bit smaller at about seven hundred and seventy. Again, in the back, we have these, your utility washer-dryer, bedroom with ample storage and the open plan. But the feature of this building, quite frankly, are the large number of three-bedroom units, and they're scattered throughout the project. There's three-bedroom units on each floor, particularly at the corner, at these corners, which offer really nice views. Here's one three-bedroom unit, which is at almost seventeen hundred square feet. This is a very lovely three-bedroom unit, large open space, big open kitchen, nice living areas, ample bedrooms and bathroom spaces. And then we have others, such as over here. We have this unit on the corner, which is twelve hundred square feet. You walk in, bedroom, 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 bathroom, bathroom, utility space, washer-dryer. This one in the middle, again, bedroom, 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 bathroom, bathroom, washer-dryer, utility space with walk-in closets in each of these large bedrooms. So we feel pretty proud of this project in the sense that we were able to provide housing for what we would imagine to be small family units in this part of Newark. I'm gonna move on to the roof. One of the amenities in this building is a very large twenty-five hundred square foot roof deck, which is serviced by the elevator, which goes all the way up to the roof, and of course, the two egress stairs. You'll also notice in this drawing that all of our HVAC rooftop units are small condensing units, and they're located on the roof far enough back so they're not visible from the street from any side of the building whatsoever. So this is causes a nice view line from the street itself. I'm gonna move on to take a look at the at the elevations. Okay. The elevations are, in my opinion, best shown through some of the renderings that we did, but I do want to just give you the front-on view. This is the ground floor here, which you can see is the storefront area. This is our parking gate and entrances and exits. You can also see on this front elevation that we have some lighting elements that we've installed or have provided at the ground level, and we lowered these lighting elements to comply with the zoning ordinance at twenty feet. Initially, we had them a little bit higher, which was triggering a variance application, which we eliminated by lowering those lighting elements. The building consists of a mixture of stone, brick masonry, and two different types of fiber cement panels. One is a panel product, one is kind of more of a siding product. We went with a couple of different colors, white, reddish color and a gray color to kind of break up the facade. Mr. Manilio mentioned that we would discuss the transparency matters, so I'm going to take the opportunity to do that now. You'll notice on the building elevation, a couple of different window types. These window types that look kind of square are, they measure six feet by seven feet. So six feet in one dimension, seven feet in the other, which is a fairly sizable glazed area for most buildings. And these long, narrow ones measure five foot six by seven feet, give or take. And so they're providing a, and I'm sorry, five foot six by six feet. So they're providing a pretty decent amount of transparency, though we do not meet. And I want to stress that we do not meet the the requirement for transparency, unfortunately. So we are gonna, we are asking for a a variance in those things. Here's our transparency numbers. On the ground floor, we have the storefront elements, which provide a considerable amount of transparency on the ground floor. So this is required as fifty and we're at thirty-eight. The primary facade requires thirty-five and we're at twenty-two. Moving on to the side elevation, again, similar material treatment. The requirement is sixty percent. We're at forty-one and forty percent of the street-facing facade. Upper building, we're at twenty-four. What we have in this elevation on the Wilburton Place is what what you're seeing on the ground floor is a brick lower level with the fiber cement panel going up. And you'll notice that we have a decorative screening device to allow for ventilation into the parking area. We felt to go with this is a very decorative element. We don't want to show what some other buildings may have as bars or some other type of grading, which would give a different type of impression. We felt this was. We felt this was much more appealing. It's metal, clear anodized, and it really does make the building feel a little bit more on the residential side and less on the institutional side as a result. And then we have the west elevation. Again, the requirement is twenty percent transparency and we're at fourteen percent. So what I would like to do is to introduce some of the renderings, if that's, if that's okay. So I'm going to open those up right now and pull that over. So here's our rendering of the, at the corner location for for the board to see what we're, what our thinking is. We feel this really does showcase the contrast and colors and kind of the architectural movement of the building facade itself. You could see some of the transparency down at the bottom and off to the side, the entry for the parking area. This is a street shot that again shows the transparency, has our dark colored brick. You could see the the siding and the panels coming through. Another image looking at it from the Broadway elevation, showcasing the workout area. You could see our lighting, which we've lowered to twenty feet. This is an elevation showing the entire front of the building, again, playing with the idea of movement, kind of pieces coming in and out, changes of color and contrast of materials. We feel this is an attractive elevation for, for this location. The next, the corner elevation. And then we have the rear, which shows the parking area at the back, the side, and then at the, at the rear. So we hope that you find this, this building acceptable in terms of what we're asking for. We think it's a beautiful structure. We had a great time working on it and we made some, obviously made some changes to try to reduce the number of variances that we are seeking. And that concludes my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Board members, do any of you have any question from Mr. De Besti, Architect?
Madam Chair, if I may, before we get to the questions.
Yes, ma'am. Get them in order.
So Mr. Hockaday, I have exhibit eight two as the site rendering from the engineer. I have exhibit eight three as the architectural plan and exhibit eight four is the rendering with seven slides.
That's correct. And also A1 is the, was the aerial view.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, do any of you have any questions for Mr. Best? I don't see any hands raised. All right. Mr. Hockaday, who's your next professional?
Our next professional is Lee Klein, our traffic engineer.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Klein. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give to this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
My name is Lee, middle national D as in Daniel, Klein, K L E I N. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and in good standing. I'm also a nationally certified professional traffic operations engineer. That certification is current and in good standing. The principal of Klein Traffic Consulting, and I am the traffic consultant for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Your license is current and in good standing.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. You've testified before us.
I have.
All right. You may proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. I prepared a traffic engineering and parking evaluation report dated June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. And in that report, I did a trip generation calculation for the proposed use. And the proposed forty units of residential mid-rise housing will generate approximately fifteen trips during the AM peak hour and sixteen trips during the PM peak hour. The approximately sixteen hundred square feet of commercial space, if it was retail, would generate approximately two trips during the AM peak hour and six trips during the PM peak hour. Most of those trips would be pass-by trips, traffic that's already on the road, that would just be pulling over on Broadway to stop into the retail establishment. The previous use as automobile care center of approximately four thousand square feet generated approximately nine trips during the AM peak hour and twelve trips during the PM peak hour. So the increase in the driveway trips from the previous use of the automated automobile care center to the forty units with the sixteen hundred square feet of retail would be approximately eight additional trips during the AM peak hour and three additional new trips during the PM peak hour. So in terms of traffic impact, the NJ DOT and the Institute of Transportation Engineers considers something less than a hundred peak hour trips not a significant increase in traffic and therefore would not experience a, an increase in delay or degradation in the average vehicle delay or the level of service at the adjacent intersections. So therefore, a full traffic impact study was not required. We also did a parking study and in that parking study, we looked at on-street parking capacity within a larger area than the typical three hundred feet. We went approximately a thousand feet. We went up and down Broadway. We were on Nursery Street, Wakeman Avenue and Harvey Street, Harvey Street across from the school. We found the total capacity within a thousand feet of the subject property to be approximately one hundred and ninety-eight parking spaces on the street. When we did our parking study on Tuesday, June fourth, between ten PM and midnight, we found approximately twelve available parking spaces throughout that time period on Broadway. No parking available on Nursery Street and no available parking on Wakeman Avenue. And we also saw that all the parking along Harvey Street in front of the school, being that the school was closed, there were fifty spots available there. For a total of approximately sixty-two off-site on-street parking spaces in the area. When we went out on Saturday, June eighth, from nine AM to eleven AM, we found approximately five available parking spaces on Broadway. We only found one parking space every once in a while on Nursery Street and zero on Wakeman. And because it was a Saturday and school was not in session and there was nothing going on at the school, approximately fifty parking spaces available on Harvey Street for a total of at least fifty-five parking spaces. So with the, the variance that we're seeking nineteen parking spaces, I, it's uncomfortable to say that within a few hundred feet larger than the three hundred feet, within about five hundred foot of the subject site, particularly on Harvey Street, we found ample parking to meet that nineteen space deficiency in the parking. There were some questions in Mr. Traficante's, or some comments in Mr. Traficante's memo that was dated February sixth, twenty twenty-five. I think I hit some of them. And I think Mr. Traficante agrees with me that since it doesn't generate a hundred peak hour trips, the level of service is not expected to change. The question about the parking within a thousand feet, where he would prefer to see within three hundred feet, and as I had said earlier, up the street, about two hundred feet from Broadway up Harvey, about two hundred feet, which would be about three hundred feet, five hundred feet total from the subject site, we found at least twenty available parking spaces on that section of Harvey Street. He's also asking us to do traffic counts in the morning on a month, excluding a Monday or a Friday, a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday from seven AM to ten AM. And I would say that during that time, that's when the residents are leaving to go to work in most cases. So if I find available parking spaces in those hours, we're not going to see a major demand of our development needing parking on the street. Really, the parking is on a, on a weeknight, Tuesday night, when we found close to midnight, that's the peak demand of residential development. Yeah, we did not do a Sunday. We did a Saturday, but I would say that from my experience in that area, that we would probably find the same amount of available parking on a Sunday as we did on a Saturday morning. So we're talking about at least fifty spaces on Harvey and a handful of spaces on the other streets. And I think that's, that might be it. I'm sure Mr. Traficante will have some questions. That's it for my direct testimony.
All right. You asked for him and now he raised his hand.
That's it.
To Traficante. Go ahead and answer your question, sir.
All right, Mr. Klein, for the record. How many of those twenty spaces you found over by Harvey were within three hundred feet of the subject site?
None of them. There, there was about an additional two hundred feet up Harvey, so we're within five hundred feet of the subject site.
Okay, fine. All right. Well, it seems like you kept going until you found the spaces you were looking for. Right? Five hundred feet, a thousand feet, fair to say? You went as far as a thousand feet, right?
Right. I did the thousand foot because that's what I did. And then to tighten it up to the five hundred feet is what, what's practical. Like I said, there's about a dozen on the weekday evenings on Broadway and the rest would be on Harvey. So we're talking about a hundred to two hundred feet up Harvey Street. And again, if it's residents of this building that are going to be parking there, they're going to see their neighbors parked there and they're going to be able to walk back with a neighbor possibly. It's, you just cross the Broadway right there at the crosswalk.
And is a five hundred foot radius considered reasonable as per, I guess, either ITE or any other?
Oh, yes. Typically, yeah, I mean typically five hundred feet, if not a little bit more would be. That's only a tenth of a mile to walk and it's, you can almost see the parking spots from the, from the property. You look across the cemetery.
All right. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's right. The cemetery. All right. Your next professional?
Any questions from the board? That's it? No? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Our next and final professional is Mr. Nicholas Graviano. Is he here?
He's joining now, Mr. Hockaday.
Okay, great. There he is.
Good evening, Mr. Graviano. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Yes, my name is Nicholas Graviano. That's Nicholas with an H, G R A V as in Victor, I A N O. I'm a planner and partner with Graviano and Gillis Architects and Planners with a business address of one zero one Crawford's Corner Road in Holmdel, New Jersey.
Mr. Graviano, state your professional qualifications.
Yes, I have been previously qualified by this board. I hold a bachelor's degree from Rutgers University, a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, and a law degree from the Temple University School of Law. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I also hold the AICP certification.
All right. Mr. Graviano, you're, you're testifying this evening as?
A professional planner.
All right. You're accepted by the board.
Thank you, Board. Always a pleasure being here. Yes, the applicant is before the board requesting preliminary final site plan approval with associated bulk variances for a specific piece of property known as block five seventy-five lot one. Mr. Manilio did a good job in, in his testimony on describing the site and surrounding area. The applicant is demolishing an existing auto-related use to provide a project, which is conformance with the permitted uses of the C-three zoning district. The applicant is in request of certain variances related to insufficient side yard setback, excessive lot coverage, excessive impervious coverage, insufficient ground level primary street-facing facade transparency, insufficient primary street facade-facing transparency on additional sides on Broadway. Additional sides for the side street. We discussed the insufficient parking spaces, the insufficient onsite trees and shade trees. There is a request for the buffer area illumination for the entrance and the number of signs. All of the applicant's requested variances can be granted under the C-two criteria in that they relate to a specific piece of property. The applicant must also demonstrate that the purposes of zoning of the municipal land use law are advanced. Specifically, the applicant's proposal advances purpose A, promotion of the general health, safety, morals, and welfare. That's done through a couple of different reasons. It eliminates the auto-dominated use. It also provides the allotted affordable housing requirement that is for the district. So this project is an inclusionary project meeting the affordable housing needs of the city of Newark. Additionally, it provides sufficient space and appropriate location for variety of residential and commercial uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. That's purpose G of the municipal land use law. And through purpose I, desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements. The impeccably designed building by Mr. Best and the site by Mr. Manilio certainly advance positive design for the community. Looking at the city's master plan, this project accomplishes many of the goals that the master plan seeks to accomplish. Specifically, the master plan seeks to accommodate dwelling units of a size that can accommodate families. And as you heard in testimony, the applicant is providing sixteen three-bedroom units, a condition that's not commonly found within the projects within the city. Additionally, the applicant is providing the nine affordable housing units. And then lastly, the master plan seeks to provide additional dwelling units by twenty thirty and the applicant's proposal certainly accomplishes that goal. Thinking deeper on some of the other variances, you heard Mr. Lee's, Mr. Klein's testimony regarding the parking adequacy. I would also like to note that the master plan seeks to eliminate minimum parking requirements for residential uses. Additionally, this site benefits from being located across from the cemetery and within proximity to the Rafael Hernandez School. So at nighttime, there's minimal parking conflicts that you would have compared to other neighborhoods. So in summary, the applicant's C variances can be granted under the C-two criteria, accomplishing the advancement of purposes A, G, and I of the municipal land use law without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and in fact, advancing goals and purposes of the master plan itself.
Thank you, Mr. Graviano.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Graviano from the commissioners? All right. I don't see any. Does that complete your professional testimony, Mr. Hockaday?
It does, Madam Chair.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mr. Baez, I see your hand. Commissioner Baez.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I believe this question is for Mrs. Stever. So considering this resolution approval, when did you guys plan to start working on this project?
Was that, was that, was that for me? Well, we'll, we'll begin construction right away. Soon as we have approval, we'll put in further permits and, and get started. So this is without delay.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Are there questions from any members of the public? If you're a member of the public and you have a question with regards to this application, please press raise hand or star nine. I see one.
Hello?
Good evening, Mr. Felsen. Hold on, you'll be some more.
Good evening, Mr. Felsen. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give to this board shall be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jacob Felsen. I live at seven seventy-seven McCarter Highway in Newark.
Good evening, Mr. Felsen. You'll have three minutes.
Okay. I had a question for the architect, Mr. Best. First of all, I mean, I'm a big fan of redevelopment in Newark, so I don't want to create any problems that way, but just a little surprised by the, the design features because I counted four different colors in the design. It seemed to me that's kind of a lot going on. If I look at buildings that most of us find most aesthetically pleasing, they don't tend to have that, that many colors. They tend to have sort of textured facades. I think of apartment buildings that are particularly attractive like Vermella on Broad Street. I think it's two-tone and a brick facade. Now, maybe the, the brick paneling is too expensive and that's why that wasn't included in this design or, or less of it. But it just seems like just the issue, just so many different colors. To me, at least, it doesn't read very, as a very cohesive. Um, to me, at least, it doesn't read very, as a very coherent structure. Uh, it would be better, for example, the first floor, if that continued from the, the rest of the building rather than being an entirely separate color. Um, I think it would look better that way, in a way. That's my comment.
All right, Mister Best, would you like to respond?
Um, well, um, I think what our approach was, was to give the building a sense of foreground and background without having to bump the building out over the property line. So the lighter color reads in, you know, at a different plane than the darker color. Uh, granted, there are, you know, there's a, a kind of a, the brick color at the bottom of the building. If, I, I think when you look at it relative to how the sun is hitting the building, if you look at this, oh, you don't see my screen, I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought my screen was apparent. I s- I apologize. If you look at this, this color at the bottom, it is essentially the same color as the panel above. But with, when the shade shading hits the period, it just appears darker. So basically, we have three colors, not four. Um, but that's, that was kind of the, the sense, that we have a darker, and we, we highlight a lower level and upper level which matches that, and the white that kind of pops. And that was our, our thinking on this one. So this, this color here is very similar to this color. So we actually have three. Yeah, you see how it looks black here, that's because on the rendering, where we positioned the sun on the rendering, it shows it as a dark.
Yeah, that's why I thought it was an, an additional color, yeah.
Thank you so much, Mister Best, it actually, sort of, it mirrors this, the colors on the school building across the street.
Yes. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for members of the public? All right, seeing none. Oh, no, I see one, Ingrid Morgan.
Is it right, okay.
Was there someone?
Oh, she, she declined to be put, I'm gonna try again, one second. Okay, should be rejoined.
Hi, good evening.
Miss Morgan, could you turn your camera on?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, um.
Miss Morgan, one second.
Okay.
Mrs. Beck, you're on mute.
Excuse me, thank you, Miss Morgan, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, uh, my name is Ingrid Morgan, address is three five eight Broadway, uh, Newark, New Jersey.
You have three minutes, Miss Morgan.
Okay, so I think there's gonna be a huge parking issue, 'cause we're already having that issue already. So, eh, the parking issue's gonna be a huge, very huge, 'cause you have the church, and then you have the school, and then you have, like, uh, the, you have residential, um, building along Broadway, which takes up most of the parking on the school side. So it's gonna be like a huge parking issue. We barely could ha- we barely have parking already. So I can imagine when that apartment building is up, is gonna be like a huge parking issue.
Thank you, Miss Morgan.
You're welcome.
Would anyone care to respond?
That, yeah, I mean, I can respond briefly. Um, yeah, a- as you see in the project, we, we do have, uh, you know, parking that for the residents, uh, a su- a substantial amount, we are asking for, uh, a slight variance. Um, but, um, what we envision for the project is that, you know, many, many will be able to also use public transportation, uh, and not every resident will, 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 will need, uh, parking. Uh, but there is some, uh, on the street that we were able to identify through our parking study.
Thank you, Mister Hockaday. Um, do we see any other folks with their hands raised, Madam Secretary?
Seeing none at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, given that there are no additional questions, would someone like to present the motions?
I'd more.
I make a motion, second.
All right, moved by Commissioner Baez and seconded by Commissioner Scott Roundtree. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Baez?
Yes.
Commissioner De Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, your application has been approved. Best wishes to you all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for those three bedrooms, all right. The next application is application number six on the agenda, C P B twenty-four dash one thirteen, the address is two ninety-two to three oh-six, Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard.
And good evening again, members of the board, my name is Marcia Moore from the law firm of Post Pollock, on behalf of the applicant. I just wanna make sure that my team is in before I begin. Madam Secretary, if you could bring in also Jeff Cram and Chuck Milney and Eric.
Is Matt Sackler also with you?
Yes, Matt's our planner and traffic engineer. Matt's, I think Matt's in twice, but I still see him, but.
Yeah.
Great, um, and again, uh, Marcia Moore from the law firm of Post Pollock, on behalf of the applicant, Q O Z B, Elabas North Urban Renewal LLC. So it is indeed a pleasure again to present this application. Um, the property is located at two ninety-two, three oh-six, M L K Boulevard, identified as block forty-two, lot forty-one, forty-four point oh-one, and located in the Broad Street Station redevelopment area, sub-district D, James Street Commons Historic District, and part of the, within the historic St. Michael's Hospital. Um, just briefly, by way of background, we originally presented this application before the zoning board in twenty eighteen. Um, that board has jurisdiction for purposes of a minor subdivision because the hospital was not permitted in the plan. The original approval included three uses for a mixed-use building. Um, the first was approximately nineteen thousand square foot office for a nonprofit organization, and that intended occupant at the time was, uh, glass roots in the basement in the first floor. There was also proposed approximately twenty-four hundred square foot office space on the second floor, and twenty-five, what was discussed as common living or co-living residential units on floors three through six, and also a lounge on the seventh floor. Again, all those uses are permitted in the redevelopment plan. The work started, the applicant received all the resolution compliance, and we all realized in twenty nineteen what happened COVID, the project stalled. My client is the new owner and the applicant, and we're seeking to modify the project. The residential units on floors three through six will remain, we're not making any modifications to those. However, the first and second floors that previously had the glass roots and some of the office space will be modified and used as residential units along with the first floor designated as commercial space. So in summary tonight, we're seeking preliminary and final site plan approval to increase the number of residential units from twenty-five to forty-two, as well as to reduce the commercial space to approximately forty-two hundred, four thousand two hundred and thirty square feet. There are some additional modifications that our architect will be ch- um, discussing. But you'll hear that this concept that we presented to the zoning board in twenty eighteen is really targeted to young professionals, um. As you're aware, the site is particular of close, the proximity is in the redevelopment plan, but it's really very, the proximity of it is institutional uses, universities. So you'll hear that the target for this type of use is students and young professionals in order to leverage our proximity. Um, just briefly, I am receipt of a number of reports, I am receipt of the Planner's Staff Report dated April second, twenty twenty-five. We have no objections to having those as conditions of approval. Mister Barry has asked us to enlist a certain testimony, in particular, what type of tenants we're using, and we, you'll hear tonight that we'll be discussing that throughout our testimony. I am also in receipt of a report from Department of Engineering dated March thirtieth, and we can agree to comply with those conditions of approval. Our engineer will be addressing a, a few comments, in particular, um, in particular, the shade tree that we are seeking relief, and there are some existing non-conformities respect to the driveway that we're asking for relief, and also respect to the light in. There's one comment that our engineer will be addressing, and we'll be working with Department of Engineer, and I'll, I'll bring that up in his testimony. And last but not least, we are in receipt of the watering sewer memorandum. Um, that report indicates they have no objection to the application and reference that the project was previously approved in September twenty nineteen, and that they have no modifications to those reported, and they did know that we discussed this at our technical review meeting, um, prior to this hearing. I do have a number of witnesses, my first witness will be our civil engineer. The site is very limited, however, we just wanted to give the, the board a view of the site and to address some of the relief. Again, most of them were existing non-conformities, and then followed by our architect will discuss the modifications of this project. We were, um, during twenty eighteen, we did provide a traffic impact study. We have our traffic engineer that has modified that. And again, to the extent that we're asking for relief regarding the light in and the existing non-conformities, we do have Mister Sackler will be serving both capacity as our traffic engineer and our planner. Um, so at this time, I would like to bring forward, um, our civil engineer, Richard Adelson.
Good evening, Mister Adelson, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board is truthful?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Richard Adelson with the firm of Frank H. Lehr, L E H R Associates, one oh-one South Harrison Street, East Orange, New Jersey. This, I am the civil engineer for this project, um, and it was prepared under my supervision.
Uh, and Mr. De, just to give us your background, your educational background, it was licensed, any you hold?
Sure, I have a bachelor of science and a master's of science in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. Um, I am a principal at Frank H. Lehr Associates and have been at Frank H. Lehr Associates for thirty-nine years. Um, I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey, as well as several other states, my licenses are current.
And you've testified before this board or similar board in the capacity of a civil engineer?
Many times.
All right, you're accepted by the board.
Okay, um, if you can share your screen, I, I mentioned that, uh, this is an existing site, the site is very limited, but if you just will give us an overview of what the civil component of this project.
Sure, share. Okay. Let's start with the exhibit, the, the exhibit of the photographs.
Yes, so if you have this marked as A one, which is in an aerial exhibit. Consistent of one.
Plan old aerial exhibit, it was prepared by C T S Architects. It is dated, um, not dated, yes it is, three seventeen twenty-five. So what we're looking at here is the St. Michael's Church property in this, in this first photograph, top left corner. You have Central Avenue, um, sorry, uh, Central Avenue vertically, Martin Luther King across the front. You'll see a red line to the left of red line, the red line in the middle of the plan is St. Michael's Hospital. To the right is the subject property, so the subject property is block forty-two, lot forty-four oh-one. As council indicated, it's a seven-story building. The building will include forty-two, um, co-living units, um, which consist of a hundred and forty-four bedrooms. Um, also included in the site, as the architect will explain in more detail, is forty-two hundred and thirty square feet of commercial space. Building itself is about twenty-one hundred sixty-nine, twenty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-nine square feet on the lot that is thirty thousand two hundred and ninety, uh, sixty-five square feet. So the building occupies about seventy-one percent of the lot. Total impervious surface is just under ninety percent of the lot. Um, site is developed, is located in a redevelopment zone. Um, neither the impervious coverage nor the maximum impervious coverage are regulated. Looking at the view just a little differently, you can see the, the front elevation of the building. Again, the architect will talk more about that. You can also see the extent that there's been significant renovation already started on the building, it's underway on the project. Flipping down the lower half of the page, you have the elevation looking from Central Avenue. Again, you can see the construction underway there, the addition that was placed on the back of the building. Um, and the start of some of the retaining walls and things like that that go along Central Avenue. Flipping to the design drawings that were submitted. You wanna mark this as a separate exhibit, or this is?
Uh, so these were presented as part of the application, so there are no modifications, so we don't have to mark them.
Okay. So, as discussed, the utilities have already been put in, there are very few improvements to this project on the exterior. There were some parking spaces, some loading spaces placed along the St. Michael's side of the building on the east side. Some planters placed for creating a plaza on the east side, which are under construction or partially constructed, some stormwater management that's already in place under the parking spaces, new flight of stairs, and then some improvements to the sidewalks. The bulk of the changes that are included in this package, um, really are sidewalk improvements to meet the current, um, A D A requirements of the city for improving sidewalks, um, also tweaking the tree placements. Um, that's really the extent of the site improvements on this project. Um, so we are proposing ten trees along the street. Um, seven along Martin Luther King, three along, um, Central Avenue. We are proposing to replace the sidewalks along both Martin Luther King and Central Avenue, as well as re- reworking the, um, handicap aprons at the corner of Central and Martin Luther King. Other improvements are, we are proposing some miscellaneous changes to the entrances. Um, I believe the plans indicate that the offenses proposed, it is our understanding from our client that they would like to not provide that fence unless it's required by historic, um, by the Historic Commission.
And I just wanna clarify that, so the applicant did be vocal before the landmarks, and when, when referring to historic, we talked about the State Historic Preservation Commission, is that correct? Of which, let's know it is SHIPO.
Correct. So SHIPO will have comments, um, and those fences are not there, so they may or may not want them back. Um, see. So, other notable things, so the building was, the building was constructed in the late eighteen hundreds with the tower on the far south side here, constructed in eighteen eighty-eight, I believe. And apparently in nineteen, eighteen eighty-eight, they didn't have to measure quite as well as we do today. Um, and we have a point four-foot encroachment, um, into the city's right-of-way, um, which we'll have to rectify with an easement, I believe. Um, but we'll talk, Mister Traffic Conti will clarify that. When we speak later, let's see, what else? As I said, grading, basically all that the grading plan shows is the regrading of the sidewalks. Um, one of our concerns is the steepness of Central Avenue in compliance with A D A, as well as the steepness of Central Avenue at the intersection. We will work with the city as far as creating the most compliant practical solution that can be achieved. It may require a deviation under A D A, under, um, pro-wag to, just because of existing conditions. The pro-wag standards do allow for deviations where the, the prevailing grade of the roads exceeds normal. The proag standards do allow for deviations where the prevailing grade of the roads exceeds normal ADA standards. Site lighting. Site lighting plan actually dates back to the original application seven years ago. Um, so some of our areas are darker than we'd like, um. That Mister Traffic Conti notes in his reviews. We did look at the fixtures. Fixtures have since been replaced since this plan was prepared. And you have new LED fixtures, streetlight fixtures along MLK. And when we modeled the newer fixtures with the newer wattages and the new efficiency, the more efficiency, the greater efficiencies of LED fixtures. We believe that all the dark spots go away. Um, we will model that. We'll check it with a light meter. And we think we can meet that requirement, but we do ask for relief. Um, in the event we can't, we are constrained by the historic preservation rules. When this went to historic preservation, I understand that they were very particular with where we were adding fixtures. And I believe we are more or less constrained with the fixture locations that are presented. Other things to note that in Mister Traffic Conti's letter. He notes that there are some missing fixtures and counts are off, um. So. This, if you if you're review, looking at his letter, item nine. In section five, ten, eleven and twelve, we'll talk about that. Talks about the A fixtures. The A fixtures are actually shown on the building elevation or uplights. As are the, um. Blum a beam up like, boom beam fixtures, those are also update, that's a comment eleven. Fixure ten. We could comment ten fixtures, C fixtures were not used. They are, they were in planters and but have been removed. And the lighting schedule notes seven fixtures. Um, for the baga lights, there are only six shown, that is correct, but there's a seventh that is shown on the elevations. So we can clarify that in the final version of the plans.
But that was also a comment from the planner, just to clarify whether or not it was seven or six, and we're we're willing to resolve that and clarify that.
That is correct, um. I'll let the. Architect talk about trash, because that's actually shown inside on the, um, architectural plan, so he can talk about that. Let's see. Let's go back to the site plan for a second. Mister Traffic Conti noted that our driveway is slightly undersized. That is an existing condition, just strange things about this property is that. Our property line actually is along the face of the building in many places, and we only own half the driveway. Um, the other half is still Saint Michael's. There's cross access easements to the back for utilities for Saint Michael's between us. Uh, and Saint Michael's. So our driveway that as as it exists is only twenty point seven six feet wide. Has functioned that way for a long time. It is functional. It is is a limited access driveway just for the loading bay and access to the utility areas. We don't consider that to be a problem, again, an existing condition. Um, we are showing a stop bar and a right turn only sign and a stop sign, which were noted by Traffic, Mister Traffic Conti. Um, so we had already addressed that.
I just want to go back. We are asking, that is an existing condition that we're not exacerbating. The requirement is twenty four feet, but. To the extent, for the record, we'll be seeking the relief on that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I do want to clarify some, just just for the record. I I know we've mentioned again, respect to the lighting, and we're constrained by the fact that. It is a subject to the state historic preservation as well as to landmarks. So we are asking for relief, respect to not having up the minimum lighting, um, because again, we're constrained. And also respect to spillage. I just want to make sure the record is clear.
Um, let's see. Just flipping through to see whether I missed anything in Mister Traffic Conti's report I wanted to question or discuss. Um, when Mister Traffic Conti speaks, we'd like to discuss the street sign. Um, at the corner, at that, at the corner of MLK and Central. Street signs are hanging from the, um, signal arms. I don't know whether you still want a traffic sign, what whether you want the dedicated sign, so. I think that is more or less that. I don't think we have any other concerns with Mister Traffic Conti's report.
Okay, and then respect to that, again, the. Encroachment into the right of way that's been there for a hundred years. Uh, we would be willing to discuss and provide some appropriate documentation to the board attorney as a condition of approval. Yeah, this has been an encroachment for over a hundred years.
I think a hundred and forty.
I have nothing further of of this witness.
Beautiful. Um, I see Mister Traffic Conti's hand is raised. Mister Traffic Conti, you are smoring.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mister Adelson.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. All right, for clarity, you, one of the items you mentioned about was about fencing. Well, let me finish. Something about to do with this Star Commission that for some reason your client couldn't put the fence back, or. Are you talking about the fence along Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard only?
So the fence along MLK is not there. There is a fence that goes from, I believe, the tower. Towards the corner and stops. I believe the fence will go from the tower to the area way. We will fence across the front of the area way because we need fall protection on that for safety. Um, but do not wish to fence the sidewalk down the sidewalks or along the front edge of Martin Luther King.
Is fall protection required in those locations?
It's just high enough that I think it's appropriate.
So it doesn't exceed thirty inches?
It doesn't, it does. I believe it does exceed thirty inches depending on if you stand on the top of a wall. So the the area way is more than thirty inches deep, but it's not more than thirty inches from grade, so. You know, our preference would be to put a low fence there to give us ourselves a a proper barricade.
All right, well, you see the dilemma here, don't you? That is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong. Anything that's over, uh, thirty inches in height within three feet of the wall requires some kind of safety fence, safety barrier.
Right, which is why we're going to put it, why we where we have the wall, we would put the barrier.
Okay, and that includes the retaining wall you're putting in, or are you put in along Central Ave, right? You're gonna have to put fencing there too, when that's all said and done.
I believe that is, I believe that has fencing or the parapet sits up that high.
All right, all right. If it doesn't now, it will when you're done though, right?
Correct. One way or another, we'll have, we'll have a proper barrier there.
Now, the lighting plan you were showing, is that something new? Because that doesn't look like what I was seeing when I did a review. Is that so with the, uh? Publications for the LEDs and all that?
That fix, the lighting plan that I showed you is in the set, um. Is dated three, seven, twenty five with a signature of three seventeen twenty five.
Right, well, all right. Well, that is the same lighting plan. That did note places along, uh. Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and one location in, uh, Central Ave where you didn't meet the half a foot candle.
That is correct. However, the lighting plan at the time was done by using lighting traces rather than a point by point analysis. This afternoon, I actually popped it into the computer to look at a point by point analysis, and I'm pretty sure that if you add. The actual spread and the extent beyond it actually fills out in this meets code. Actually, I think it's probably higher with the new LED fixtures.
So based on your latest analysis, you do meet the minimum of a half a foot candle in the walkways?
I believe we do, um. We're asking for leniency on that because again, those are the existing streetlights, and I don't believe we can put new posts up to fill it in if we need to.
All right, again, public safety is the issue, right? You are aware.
Yes.
And historical commission has its rules, but the historical commission can't turn a blind eye to public safety, especially at a hospital. So before you ask for relief, please keep in mind, it is for the general public. That there's some foot traffic, anyone walking by, not to mention anyone coming to visit. A relative or friend in the hospital that especially at night, they can see the way, especially if they have kids, things like that. Especially if you got all these walls with fences, okay? It's a concern. So before you tell us, well, we're asking for relief, can you do your utmost? Go back if you need to, do a lighting study at night to see if you, the existing light fixtures from streetlights. Fill in those voids if you haven't done so already. All right, but I cannot endorse this if you don't meet the minimum. That's the concern.
We will go out and re- look at it and and fill it appropriately.
All right, again, it's public safety, otherwise. And likewise, the driveway apron that's shared on the off of Central Avenue. All right, is that, does that meet the minimum? That's supposed to be a half a foot candle as well, or somebody gets hit by a car. Yeah, at that end, yeah, it looks like.
We'll, we'll look at that one as well.
All right, well, again, there seems a corner of that that's under a half a foot candle.
So again, no, you, as you are aware, the fixtures are additive, so that. Two fixtures crisscross, two half foot candles equals a foot can, a foot. So you've got one fixture, two fixtures crisscrossing, so while it doesn't show it's shaded. That would be a foot can, a one foot candle point in a model, so I suspect we're absolutely fine there.
All right. And all right, otherwise, all the comments in the initial reports that are board dated March thirtieth, you can comply with?
Yes, except as I noted with the concerns regarding to AD, regarding ADA on, um. Central Avenue, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that and see whether we can meet, we'll get it under proag.
Yeah, as long as you can satisfy proag and ADA. Whether it be a landing for the sidewalk for somebody in a wheelchair, if it says concern slope, I believe, you have to provide a landing.
I believe we have to carve, we'll have to carve in a landing to make it comply, correct.
And that's something you agree to?
Yes.
All right, all right then. Otherwise, you're good with everything else, fair to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Traffic Conti. All right, um, commissioners, any questions? No, uh, okay. Your next professional, Mr. Moore.
Miss Moore, you're on mute. I'm muted, yes, thank you. I'd like to call our architect, Brian Copetor, you see him?
Before you begin, Mister Commissioner Purdy, do you have a question?
I don't think Commissioner Purdy is on.
Okay, because.
He's on the attending.
Oh, he's trying to come back in.
Good evening, Mister Copetor. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
My name is Brian Copertor. I'm an associate, uh, principal at CTS Group Architects. And, uh, I am the project manager on this project.
And Mister Copetor, can you just state your educational background and what license fee do you hold?
Certainly. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey. Uh, I graduated from NJIT with a master's in architecture in two thousand and six. And I've presented in front of this board and, uh, multiple historic and zoning and planning boards.
And your license is still current?
Yes.
All right, you make me see Mister Copetor.
All right, thank you. I will share my screen. Can everyone see this?
Yes, if you can just zoom a little bit, the worded, okay.
Yeah, so, um, just to reiterate, this, uh, this building is a very prominent building in the James Street, uh, Commons Historic District. Um, the owner, uh, is seeking historic tax credits with National Parks and with Shippo. Um, so we've been in very close communication with, uh, Shippo and National Parks on all the work that is, um. Visible and, uh, in the main, uh, areas that they have control of. Uh, the same can be said for Newark Historic Commission. We've been in close contact with them. Uh, but typically, they've been deferring to Shippo and National Parks as they follow the same standards. Um, those areas that they, um, have jurisdiction over are, uh, the exterior elevations. Uh, the main interior corridors and the, uh, uh, there is a lovely chapel, um, in, uh. The, uh, the, uh, north building. Um, so I'm not going to spend too much time on these photos, but, uh, thi- this is just sort of the evolution of the building. Um, the original building was built in eighteen seventy one, uh, with the, with an addition in eighteen eighty eight. And as, uh, uh, Rick stated, the tower was, uh, excuse me, was added in eighteen eighty eight. Um. So we were fortunate enough to be involved in this project, uh, in two thousand and eighteen. So these images are just conditions of the building before, um, the previous project, uh, was undertaken. Um, you, you can see the condition of the roof, um, and the masonry, um, and other elements of the building. I'll touch on these quickly, but previous work that was completed was, um, we did a hundred percent joint repointing. Uh, we repainted the masonry and you'll, you'll see the, if you've driven by, you can see it's a consistent, uh, orangish brick color now. Um, masonry repairs were completed, uh, a new roof was put on both buildings. Uh, so the building is now, um, for the most part, watertight. Um, restored, uh, we restored existing wood windows on the main, uh, on the Central Avenue and on the MLK elevation. Uh, which was a requirement by Shippo and National Parks, um, on the rear where we were allowed to install aluminum windows. Uh, they were installed, about fifty percent of the, uh, aluminum windows were installed as part of the previous project. Um, there were, uh, three small additions that were in, completed as part of the previous project. Um, and as Rick mentioned, uh, the detention system was installed as part of that. Um, utilities were connected with the exception of gas and, uh. On the interior, um, the floors three to six were framed out. The floors one and two were framed out as well, but those are being redesigned as part of this application. Um, and on floors three to six, uh, roughly fifty percent of the utilities are are roughed in. Um. So here are just some additional existing conditions. Or I'm sorry, pre-existing conditions from the previous application. Um, I'm not going to spend any time on this, uh, as Rick, uh, covered this fairly well. Um, so here's the building as it exists today. Uh, this is from the corner of MLK and, uh, Central. Um, showing you can see the. The consistent brick color now, and the brownstone was all coated as well. Um, you can see the restored windows and, um, on the first floor and ground floor, um. A protection was put in when the project, uh, was previously stopped. Um, additionally, you can see, uh, spots where the paint was never installed. Those areas were, uh. They were not installed due to, uh, moisture in in the brick, um, and the intent is obviously to, uh, you know, finish coating these areas. Once, uh, the building is, um, heated and cooled, those, uh, those wet spots should go disappear. Um, this is the, uh, eight, original eighteen seventy one building. And the north building, uh, with the chapel is the eighteen eighty eight building. Then if you come around to Central Avenue, you see the tower. Um, the wood trim was not, uh, around the dormers was not fully completed. Uh, that will be painted, um. Uh, once, uh, the project that gets back underway. Um. Here is one of the additions to, that was a very small addition, just for a storefront entrance. For the, uh, previous commercial tenant and the current commercial tenant will now use this as their entry. Um, you can see the garage door here, uh, the, the previous tenant was going to be a glass blowing, uh, glass roots. Uh, tenant, and they wanted this large space where, um, their, uh, work. Um, could be vi- viewed from the street to sort of draw people in. Um, that garage door is now going to be replaced with, um, oh, here's a better view, sorry. With, uh, with a storefront, a fixed storefront, so it will not be operable. And there will be a, uh, a residential unit behind, um, behind this door now. Uh, so here's the, uh, largest. Uh, so here's the uh, largest of the three additions that was installed. Um, as you can see, it wasn't fully completed, uh, it still needs to be faced with um. With uh, ma- masonry which matches uh, or is similar to the existing's buildings masonry. And I'll cover that further in the uh, in the elevations. Um, Shippo has approved um, the masonry material that we're proposing on uh. To clad that elevation. And again, you can just see the eighteen, the original eighteen seventy-one and uh, eighteen eighty-eight buildings. And then uh, here are renderings of what everything should look like when it's completed. Um, we have a mechanical screen around um. Where a number of mechanical uh, condensers will be for the residential units. Sir Trafficante, here's the uh. Uh, fence that you were referring to along that retaining wall at the terrace. Um, and we, we also have uh. Further pictures of um, what we anticipate this mechanical screen will look like. Uh, here is the um. The commercial tenant entry. Uh, into the building. And um. And again, the uh, the mechanical screen up above. Um, here's a rendering of the rear elevation. Uh, we're adding a window, um, here, these windows all exist, or the, the openings exist. The windows will be new there. Uh, and here's a. Sample of what the masonry uh, cladding will look like. And then just two additional renderings of uh, the finished um, project from MLK. So. Here, uh, this sheet here, A uh, one hundred is our breakdown of unit types. It also shows uh, floor by floor where residential uh, versus commercial is. You, you can see that on the uh, proposed first floor, we have um, our commercial space. Um, there is no uh. Proposed tenant yet, um, but I'll let um. I will let Marcia and Jeff speak more to that. And then down on the first floor, um. Is our uh. Other utilities, uh, spaces, um, offices, sort of back of the house spaces, laundry room. And uh, the commercial tenant's storage. So, um, I'm going to. Quickly run through the plans here, um, I've shown. Uh, the previously approved plans for uh, the basement firsts and second floors and seventh floor. And I've also showed uh, you know, what, what we're now proposing. Um, so previously, uh, again, it was uh, the tenant on the basement and first floor was a glassblowing studio. So, the basement was largely uh, one of their workshops. Um, with a laundry room for the residential tenants, uh, and an elevator which they would access that by. Um, with a garbage room, um, where garbage would be collected and brought um, out. To the site for uh, pickup through these uh, through these doors. Uh, and then. Over to the north, um, there's uh. A, a shared space with the hospital, um. Where we would, we're putting water heaters, um, and uh, offices for uh, the building management. Um, the newly proposed plan. Uh, with the additional um, residences, we needed a larger laundry room, so we've provided that here. Uh, there is no more glassblowing uh, studio, so we have um. Uh, run of most of the building for the residential tenant. Um, and then we are providing uh, commercial spaces here. Um, the garbage room remains, uh, elevator remains, offices and storage over to the north remains. And um, the uh. Mr. Trafficante's comment about uh, garbage and recycling. Uh, we will meet that uh, requirement, um, so this garbage room will. Uh, likely become a recycling room and then uh, we will find additional space for uh, to meet the. Larger requirement of uh, trash that's going to be. Passing through uh, the residences. Um, the. First floor was uh, there, the glassblowing studios' main workshop spaces, um. Here's the main corridor in the building. Uh, and this repeats on every floor. Uh, to the east of uh, of that corridor was the glassblowing studios' main shops. And to the west were their classrooms and offices. And then at the, at their entrance, uh, was a reception area, uh, like an art gallery. Um, and uh. A small kitchenette uh, for, for events that were held in the gallery. And uh, previously, um, a coffee shop was proposed for this small commercial space here. Uh, here is our updated plan, um, here's that same corridor. Uh, and we are in filling with um, replacing the workshop areas and the offices with uh. With residential units. Um, this center space here. Uh, is now the uh, proposed commercial space and as I previously stated, um, we, we. There is no tenant at this time.
And Brian, what, um, and just confirm that, that the square footage of that commercial space?
Uh, is. One second, Marcia, I wrote it down. The total commercial space or just the commercial space on this floor?
Just on that floor.
Just on that floor.
Would be like thirty, thirty-one?
Yeah, three thousand three hundred and thirty square feet. And that's all, all of, of these spaces here. Okay, so the second floor uh, previously was artist studios. Um, just small little uh, offices, uh, where single people would rent out, um. You know, a couple hundred square feet uh, to. Uh, you know, do. What artists do, painting, design, um. Working, uh. And now. We are proposing um. Residential units in these areas as well. So, I can. I can walk you through a typical sort of unit here, um, these are uh. These units are the same models as the upper floors, um, they're co-living units where uh. You essentially rent uh, a bedroom and then you're sharing a living space. And also whatever amenities the building has with um, your, your roommates, so. Um, this is a four-bedroom unit, um. So bedrooms are. In this unit, these bedrooms are decent size, um, the small, we, we tried to keep the units uh. Well above a hundred square feet and there's only three in the new, newly designed spaces. That are um, slightly smaller than a hundred square feet. Um, so here you've got your shared kitchen, shared bathroom, uh. Another shared bathroom and then um. Excuse me, uh, you know, your, your living room, uh. And some, some of the spaces are large enough to have a dining room table as well. Um, and then if I move down, this is a s- a standard uh, two-bedroom. Uh, so bathroom, bedroom, two bedrooms, a shared kitchen and a small living space. Um, the amenity spaces that I mentioned before, this is one of them here, you've got a roof deck, um. Uh, where, you know, there could be activities, uh, just. Getting together to hang out, um. The main entrance of the building are these two entrances here. Um, off of MLK. Excuse me, and um, oh, I wanted to, let me scroll back real quick, um. We have an ADA accessible entrance that we are creating or created as part of the previous application off of MLK. It comes in uh, mid-level of the first floor and second floor. And there's a small lift and uh, stair that go up to the main uh, second floor level. Which is where um. You can see the lift and the stair here, which is where residents would get their mail. And any, you know, security uh, would, would be located. I'll, I'll just quickly run through the, the floor plans that haven't changed at all. Uh, the chapel I mentioned is uh, is here, it's going to be on the third floor, it's going to be fully restored. And will become uh, a library, um, like a, a, a work, uh, a work, workspace. Uh, essentially just um, tables, chairs, couches, um, lounge. Uh, lounge area. Um, the, the chapel's a two-story space, so it appears on the fourth floor as well, um, with this uh, balcony. And uh, you can see over here, there's um. One of the other amenities, um, there's some beautiful balconies uh, that were used uh. As uh, solariums for uh, the hospital patients, um. These are quite large and uh, you know, nice amenity spaces for. The apartments that uh, that use them. Um, and then above the chapel, we've got um. Units as well, uh, up on the fifth floor. Uh, with another uh, small lounge here. There's, there's a lot of uh. Non-conventional spaces in this uh, building that um. We uh, you know, it's challenging to uh. Make, make everything fit and work, but I, I think we did a pretty good job. Uh, the sixth floor, um. This is uh, now within the first level of the mansard roof, so. You can see the roof starting to slope in and reduce our uh. Our, our footprint. Uh, so there are obviously less units here, and we have a, a. Couple studios, um. One bedrooms. And then on the seventh floor, the previously approved seventh floor was a lounge, a common lounge, uh, with access to a roof deck. And the newly proposed seventh floor is a, essentially a studio. Um, unit, um, but there is still public access to the uh, to the roof deck. Which has uh, a very nice view of um, downtown Newark. On the. Roof of the eighteen eighty-eight or of the eighteen seventy-one building, uh, we have most of our mechanicals. Um, it's a flat roof, so it's really the only place there is, uh, as Rick had mentioned before. The, the property line of the building, um. Or is, the property line of the site essentially follows the building, so we, there's not much room. If any, to put uh, mechanical units on grade, so. Um, we utilize this flat roof area and uh, the flat roof area down below. For uh, any mechanicals. And then uh, this additional roof plan, uh, you can see the same and um. This is a picture of the current uh, condensers for uh, installed for the uh. Floors three to six. On the elevations, um, the previously approved uh, elevations are, uh, this is the previously approved MLK elevation. Um, you can see the two main entrances. For each of the two buildings, um. And uh, Rick had mentioned before how we're bound by National Parks and Shippo on lighting. So you can see how extensive of a lighting plan we had previously. And they uh, rejected it, they said it was too uh, too heavy and that they wanted uh, less. Uh, so you can see uh, bubbled here are where we removed uh, a number. A number of fixtures and uh. What uh, what we're left with. So we're still uplighting the tower on the corner of Central, so that when you come down. Uh, the hill on Central, it's still pronounced and prominent. And then here is the new ADA uh, entrance off of MLK. Which is located right here. Uh, to the north of the uh, eighteen eighty-eight entrance. Um, these are just the return elevations off of MLK. And again, um, just showing where we were uh, required to remove uh, light fixtures. Um, previously approved, uh, Glass Roots was the name of the previous, uh, the glassblowing studio, the tenant. Um, so their storefront, the, and now the commercial tenant storefront is located here and that garage door. Uh, that was installed, um, detailed here. And this is the revised plan, um. If you note in here in uh. Detail one, you can see the shaded area on the um, on the storefront. That's going to be um. Opaque glass so that it's not fully transparent, so it does give the residents of that uh, unit. Um, some, some level of privacy. And, and uh, our signage band which uh. Will, will conform, but it will be a separate application, correct, Marcia?
The agreement that we made with the historic is that we'll submit that. Uh, will comply and to the extent that it deviate, then they would have to go back to the historic. But again, um, as you testified, there is no proposed commercial tenant at this point, so we just have the signage band. But we're not seeking any relief today.
Uh, and then the rear elevation, you can see those um, large balconies, um. For a number of the units on the eighteen seventy-one building. Uh, which, that's the previous application, the current application, they remain. You can see uh, the mechanical units as discussed up on uh, the flat roof. Um, here's the rear elevation of the chapel with the two-story windows. And then uh. The uh, the addition that was previously constructed, um, on the two-story brick building. Uh, and this is what um. Uh, Shippo and National Parks approved, they uh. They, they like, um. Materials that are similar to the existing, but still distinct and different, so that you can tell. What's the addition and what's the original. And so, um. Uh, the, these. New blocks will be uh, eight, eight inches tall by sixteen inches wide. And uh, will be a similar color to the existing masonry facade. And then these are just uh, light well and uh, minor elevations, uh, where nothing, um, nothing is changing. So that, um.
So I, I do want to address one, I make one of the comments that Mr. Barry made and we agreed to make that um, condition of approvals, providing. Bicycle parking due to the proximity of the downtown area that we would be revisiting that and providing some bicycle parking, is that correct?
Uh, yes, correct, um. So. Since we got those comments, um. You, you know, we looked at areas to store bicycles and um. It, we're, we're, we're still working on it, but um, at a one-to-one bicycle to unit ratio, we. Uh, we would need um, this entire uh, space to uh, to store. Uh, forty-two bicycles. So, um, we're, we're playing around with it now, but it will uh, likely be um, in this commercial storage space. Or, or somewhere, um, somewhere in, in this area here.
And I'm sure the board can see that there's no parking requirement that's being provided due to the inability to do so. And the redevelopment plan does not require parking, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
I believe Mr. Edelson addressed the issue with the fencing that was called out in the planner's report, but um. I have nothing further at this time.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Moore. Members of the board, do any of you have any questions with regards to this application? If so, please raise your hand now. Alright, seeing uh, member, okay. Member Commissioner Austin, I'll take your question first and then.
Real quick, I was just curious, what is the uh, range of affordability for the units?
So the proposal will be twenty percent of the number of bedrooms, so that's equivalent to twenty-nine bedrooms.
Do you know like, what uh, AMI?
Believe um, eighty percent, so this was subject before, believe at eighty percent, there was a financial agreement, so that would be at eighty percent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Austin. Commissioner Baez. Well, he lowered his hand.
Thank you, Mayor Chair, no, uh, Commissioner answered the question that I was going to ask you, thank you.
Alright, thank you so very much. Alright, um, at this time, we're going to take questions from members of the public. If you're a member of the public and you have a question with regards to this application. Please press a raise hand or dial. If you're a member of the public and you have a question with regards to this application, please press a raise hand or dial star nine if you're calling in. Let's see, Mr. Canizo. They're not accepting.
They're, he's uh joining now.
Good evening, Mr. Canizo. Can you please turn on your camera? Mr. Canizo, can you hear us? There you are.
My uh camera, hi. Um, so I am.
One second, please, you're gonna be sworn.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Canizo. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Gabriel Canizo. Uh, my address is two ninety-seven MLK uh Boulevard, right across the street. Um, do you need anything else?
No, you have three minutes to state your question or concern.
Okay, uh, so there uh, I, I know there, there was a lot of talk about the lighting. Uh, there's a current street light that doesn't operate, so I'm assuming that that would be part of the, the upgrades as well.
Richard, do you wanna um, Marcia Moore for the applicant? Richard, do you wanna address that?
Sure. Um, so we will talk to the town about notifying utility company to get the light fixture repaired or replaced. Um, it is a public fixture and we actually can't fix it.
Okay. Um, and, and then uh that satisfactory, um, and then my uh last question is, I know parking is not required as part because of the redevelopment, but with the increase of, of units, right? Would this property still be eligible for parking permits for street parking, which would? And, and I know the rules per unit would be two per unit, so does that mean there'd be eighty-four permits potentially happening in this area? And I, I don't know if that's a question for the, the engineer or architect, but um.
I'm, I'm gonna pass.
So um, we weren't proposing our testimony about street parking as far as permits. I believe the report that we provided that there's ample parking in the area. So the redevelopment plan specifically indicates that we don't have to provide any, so there hasn't been any testimony about permits. We, we, we don't. We haven't looked into any street permits. We don't need parking and not as being provided.
Understood. Uh, I, I would just, just acknowledge as, as someone that has to park on street, because my home has no no backyard driveway or anything, that the parking already with the existing homes and residences is pretty full on that street. And then everything else is metered parking around, so that might be something to uh, for the board members to consider as well. Um.
Thank you, Mr. Canizo.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe we have one more, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Mara. If you could please unmute and turn on your camera so you can be sworn.
Hello.
Good evening. Uh, do you solemnly swear the testimony about to be given shall be truthful?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Tamara Medius, three oh one Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, across the street from this project.
All right, you have three minutes.
Sure. I, as I mentioned, is a, as a tenant of the block and reiterating uh what a four, what the past um resident said. For the last few years, I would have to say I've been going through the hardship of watching this project start and stop. So I'm excited to see their movement to completion. Um, but that being said, the, I know that it's not required to have parking. However, parking is an issue. This is a main road with only parking on one side of the street, which only currently is at max capacity with the residents that are on the, is that the west side of Dr. MLK uh Boulevard? Um, so I don't know if there's a variance or something that could go into play that whether these residents are given residential parking on the street or have to go to street parking with meters. Um, but as a resident, it is a concern to have forty-two, potentially eighty-plus permits issued for a street that only, that has very limited residential parking.
Thank you. Um, unfortunately, I don't believe that there's anyone on who could answer that question. That's definitely a city question and concern. Cause my hope is that we're not issuing, issuing more permits than the block would have capacity to absorb, right? But thank you, that concern is noted. It'll be in the minutes. Thank you, Ms. Remedios. All right, do we have any other questions?
Seeing none at this time, Madam Chair.
All right, seeing none, we need someone to present a motion, please.
I move in a by chair.
Second.
So it was moved by Commissioner Baez, and I wanna say that it was seconded by Commissioner Purdy.
Correct.
Not certain. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner De Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Commissioner Baez?
Yes.
Commissioner Purdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, your application has been approved.
Thank you again. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful evening.
You're so very welcome. Have a good evening. All right, application number seven. CPB twenty-four dash one fourteen is two oh two South Orange Avenue, two seventy Morris Avenue is New Community. Mm-hmm.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Corolla Perez. How are you?
Patient. No, I'm joking.
You know me, I'm gonna drag some things sometimes.
No, no, I appreciate the time. Um, and uh I have the pleasure this evening. And let me just make sure first that my members are on. I have Anthony, perfect, and we have representatives from New Community. Um, so Simone, um Wayne, Richard Roman, might be two. I see the, my main witness on, so with that, I'll proceed. Um, good evening, Jennifer Corolla Perez, for the record of Colonel Foley, on behalf of the applicant, New Community Homes Development LP on application CPV twenty-four one one four as it relates to two oh two South Orange Avenue. This project is referred to as the Morris. Um, before I proceed, just wanted for the record as well that the application, um, notice that this application was published at least ten days prior to this hearing at the, for the local newspaper online. Uh, we also provided notice to the adjoining property owners within two hundred feet and a sign was posted at the property consistent with your city ordinances, which allows us um to prepare the affidavit of notice that was sent to your board secretary for jurisdiction to proceed this evening. Um, so with that said, um, the property is located in the C two commercial uh, commercial community zone, and the applicant has filed this application with the city to request preliminary and final site plan approval with C bulk variance relief for the development of a new four-story mixed-use affordable multifamily building. This project is one hundred percent affordable and will consist of uh ground floor approximately four thousand forty-five square feet of ground floor retail commercial use that will be occupied by New Community Corporation affiliates and working with community partners to provide services, for example, youth services like STEM programming, music classes, financial literacy classes, family service resource centers, career training, et cetera. So that space will be occupied by New Community. Uh, the project will have a hundred and twenty residential units. We will have one hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces and there will be tenant amenity space as well. As part of this application, there is, in addition to site plan approval, there are variant, there are some variances that we are requesting, including front yard setback, side yard setback, um designated entrance for non-residential use, ground floor height, trees and illumination. Um, we'd like to note that we have Mr. Anthony Di Augusta from Englisher Architecture, who will be the main witness providing testimony on this application. We do have representatives from ownership should the questions arise that warrant uh their input and testimony. Um, and before we begin, and I, I call Mr. uh Di Augusta, we received from the city three reports. Central Planning Board reports that, uh Board Staff Report dated April second. The Department of Engineering Review Memo dated April second. And the Department of Water Sewer Review Memo dated March twenty-fifth. We will certainly address the questions noted and provide the testimony and the clarification that was requested by um your city professionals, the board professionals. Uh, but I will stipulate that the applicant will agree to the suggested conditions of the approval that are noted in those reports, and we will work to comply where required. Um, and will note that the waivers and the variances that were identified and that your city professionals had no objections to granting. Uh, we ask that that release be granted.
Mm-hmm.
So with that, I'd like to have Mr. Anthony Di Augusta sworn in, please.
Good evening, Mr. Di Augusta. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Sure. Anthony Di Augusta, partner in Glace Architecture and Engineering of six three two Ponton Avenue in Cedar Grove, New Jersey. I'm a graduate of NJIT right here in Newark with a bachelor's of architecture and a master's of infrastructural planning. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, and that status is still in good standing. Um, I've appeared across many municipalities in the state, um, including have the benefit of and honor of being before this board multiple times.
You're accepted by the board.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Di Augusta, your office uh prepared the plans that were submitted as part of this application. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct. And before we begin, you received, you've had the opportunity to review the reports that were issued by the board professionals. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, and you would have no issues in complying with the recommendations and conditions identified as it relates to uh the engineering comments, correct?
Correct.
Right. And the ones that were noted in the planner's report as well, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Uh, and if you can, please utilizing, I believe you're gonna be referencing the plans that were submitted, can you please provide the board with an overview um with respect to the project that's being proposed this evening?
I'd be honored to. Um, if I may, I'll share my screen.
Thank you.
Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, so I, uh, as mentioned by Ms. Corolla Perez and the architect of the project, our office is overseeing both the architecture and civil engineering and site planning for the project. For the benefit of everyone's time, it's approaching ten o'clock. Uh, I'm going to hustle through this and try to handle all of the uh presentation myself. Um, if need be, we need to get into the niggery with the uh nuances of the engineering. Our staff engineer is here. Um, if we can call to him if, if need be, um, but I'll try to wear both hats if you don't mind. Um, I'll intro the project, uh, get ourselves familiar with the site. Um, in general, um, the project exists um at a through-block scenario bet- uh between Morris Avenue and what was previously Bruce Street, which is now a private drive. Um, and just west of South Orange Avenue or Page West. And uh, the project has a sloping topography, whereas Morris Avenue is at a much higher elevation, a full story higher than Bruce. And as you'll see, as we move through this, um, we utilize that topography to build in a basement garage. Um, but as mentioned earlier, the project is wholly within the C two zone. Um, Morris Avenue is running left to right here. That'll be consistent on the rest of the media that we see tonight. Um, Bruce Street will be at the bottom of the page and South Orange Avenue won't show up frequently, but it is towards the right of the stage. Um, and one uh point of note, uh, there is an existing parking lot that's adjacent to our project that is part of this property. Um, there is no anticipated work done on that property. It's seven parking stalls that, that feed um, the adjacent New Community Building um that fronts uh um South Orange Avenue. Um, so it's, it's separate, it's within the property, but um in general, we're, we're not really touching that.
And, and Mr. De Silva, just for clarification, the, the site is currently vacant, correct?
The site is currently vacant. I'll walk us through some photos that show um its current state or at least what the state was when we took the photos a few months ago.
Right. And then to your point with respect to identifying that area where there are seven parking spaces, I believe you indicated that, that, I know I'm jumping ahead, but the, that was not calculated in our parking count, correct, as it relates to this application?
That is correct. Our parking count is independent of those seven parking stalls. Those are not part of the tabulation.
Thank you. You can proceed.
Thank you. Um, so I'll, I'll jump towards the photos, so it's a little easier to tell the story. Um, from Bruce Street, um, at the bottom of the project, we're looking up again on this sloping topography. Um, there was a series of, of housing units built here, um, and since demolished the, in the last fifteen years or so. Um, as you could see, that the grade sort of jumps up as South Orange Avenue rises towards the right. The hospital's off to the right, and then um at the top of Morris Avenue is uh, is, is our street frontage. Um, at the top of this page, which is sheet T one dot one O, um, facing down uh or facing east um, uh from Mars, you could see that the property has been um fenced in and, and all buildings on the property have been demolished. Um. I'm gonna jump to page six, which is C one twenty. Um, this is an intro of our dimensional site plan. And I'll use this just to walk us through the lay of the land. Again, Morris Avenue is up towards the top of the screen. Bruce Street is towards the bottom or was formerly Bruce Street and South Orange is off to the right. Our primary um ingress and egress from uh, from pedestrian and, and re- and tenants will come in through the lobby, um, sort of central to our facade. Um, and by and large, you sort of have this um T-shaped building with a, a large terrace that's shared at, at the second floor. And again, because we're a full story higher, um, some of the graphics here will need to be sort of sussed out a little bit, but by and large, what we're seeing is a ground-level entry off of Mars and then a ground-level entry into the basement off of Bruce. We'll jump to that sheet in a second, but I'll walk you through the, the ground floor plan here. Um, most of the floor plan is populated by residential units. Um, we have a series of one, two, and three bedroom units, and we'll get to those square footage sizes in a bit. Uh, but those units are sprinkled across this floor as well as the three floors above. Um, also on this floor uh is the aforementioned community center. Um, it was previously labeled amenity in some previous drawings, so Jennifer, we might wanna note that that has since been revised. Um, what was amenity space um is community center. Um, that square footage has not changed and all of the programming that was previously discussed earlier is still intended. Again, that is our com- commercial component of this project, um, occupying sort of the central portion of the floor plan. Um, coming in off of, of Morris, um, we have a main lobby with uh security and office um, having eyes on that lobby and entry area at all times. Um, and as we make our way sort of deeper into the project, um, we have a pair of elevators um off the main lobby, a second or a third elevator deeper into the, the floor plate uh and requisite fire stairs to supply um foot traffic up and down in our building. Um, the building, as mentioned earlier, is a hundred and twenty units. It is four stories, again with a full basement garage. Um, the relief we're seeking in terms of front yard and side yard setbacks um is actually a, a unique one. We're actually exceeding the uh maximum setback, um, or I'm sorry, the minimum setback. The setback required here is zero. We're providing a five-foot or a ten-foot setback on the front um, and um some, some different dimensions on the side. And the, the reason for that is we're trying to populate the front sort of lawn of our property um, with a bit of landscaping. Um, we know that um in our urban environments, there's, there's frequently not an opportunity to take advantage of populating that um with vegetation and, and shrubbery, so we're trying to take advantage of that. Um, additionally, uh, in the engineering report, there was a commentary regarding street trees. Um, by pulling our building off of the street frontage, we are able to meet those street tree requirements. We'll circle back to that a bit. But by and large, our landscaping is sort of a priority for us um, to make sure that, that warm inviting uh street frontage along uh Morris Avenue. Um, and then towards the backside of the site, um, again, we're basically a story up here. Uh, but looking down at street level, um, again, there's a, a significant planting bed along what was formerly Bruce Street. Again, to sort of create. Again, to sort of create a more welcoming environment um towards the back end of our site.
Uh, Mister Di Agosta, if I can, um, there was a question in the engineering report with respect to demolition work within the vacated portion of the Bruce Street right of way. Uh, we can just note for the record that the applicant. Um, will be doing some work on that site and will agree to 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 make sure that the street is remedied. Is that correct? Is that your understanding?
That's right. The the it's very likely that our construction access will come off of Bruce Street, off of South Orange at the Bruce Street. Um, and the 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 current condition of this street probably requires some work anyway. So our our client is committed to repaving, milling and repaving all of the Bruce Street from the edge of our property out to South Orange Avenue.
Okay. And just a a point that I think I missed earlier when we were discussing the vacant land and that adjoining parking lot. Are you aware of any encroachments or easements that exist on that property with respect to access?
We are not aware of any, no.
Okay, so that does not serve, uh, there is no any ingress or egress easements for pedestrian or vehicular traffic within that adjoining lot, correct?
That is correct, best to our knowledge at least.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll jump to page. Uh, seven, which is now the parking garage. Again, we are basically a full story below. And what you have here uh is a parking garage that is serving all of our residents. Um, within this garage, we have a one-to-one parking count for all of our uh potential residents in the building. Um, outside of that footprint of the building, we have uh six parking stalls, parallel parking stalls on what was Bruce Street, sort of. Secondary to us. As a reminder, we are in the C two zone. Parking is not a requirement, but um the reality is that. Practically, we need to provide some parking for the project and given that the the topography allowed us to do so. We took advantage and sort of inserted this this larger parking garage to serve our building. Um, the the parking garage itself will will provide the requisite EV parking spaces. And we meet the general dimensions of the parking drive aisles, if not exceed them, um, as per your ordinance. Also here, um. The only vehicular ingress and egress to the site exists off of the former Bruce Street, so you're sort of coming in off of. Um, South Orange and you can enter either of these um parking stalls to go in, park and exit out. Um, there's a there's a left out only out of this because obviously as Bruce Street sort of dead ends here. Um, the only access is back out towards South South Orange, but but the takeaway here is that our vehicles come in at this level. And our people come in at the other level, the higher level. The loading for this building will occur on Bruce Street. Um, we don't have a dedicated loading area, but given that Bruce Street. Um, is a uh a private street. Um, there's ample space here to load a box truck for move-ins and. Whatever deliveries the project may have. We're not anticipating a huge delivery uh need for a project um with the. Commercial programming as described. Um, there's not a terrible amount of uh material that needs to be delivered for for that community center. Um, and you know, as move-ins for a hundred twenty units, um, there is, there does need to be some space and we think Bruce Street is a is a perfect opportunity. Sort of it's sort of a sleepy street dedicated to towards our building and and our use. And we could leave Mars Ave um to its its own use and not bog down that street when when move-ins happen.
Thank you.
Um, I'll jump to page nine, which is uh one thirty one. I'm just quickly highlighting the area to which we are providing stormwater retention. Right? It's a pretty big site. It is generally currently um uh vacant. Um, there were buildings here, but. Um, per the ordinance and per state statute, we need to provide some modicum of of stormwater retention. So we have that on our property um outside the footprint of our building. Again, um, this is the rare opportunity that a a site like this affords us the ability to keep that stormwater out of our garage, but it's out of the footprint of our building. Uh, and a distance away from our neighboring properties that it won't impact their their use at all. Page fifteen. Which is C uh one dot six O. This is our lighting plan. I'm not going to spend a ton of time on it, but I will highlight that there was a concern about um excessive lighting. Um, we did re- review those conditions. Um, in our opinion, there the areas that we're exceeding um is is a is a reasonable. Additional illumination in those spaces. Um, the the purpose of that area um that we're illuminating is really to focus on. Um, security, um, obviously, given that the two street frontages prior, the security priority here is pretty high. Uh, and the we felt though as though to increase the lighting illumination and photometrics in those general areas. And by and large, uh, we're not excessive. We're just a little bit higher than what's required. Um, um, but in general, we're looking for uh a granted waiver on that.
Correct. And just for point of record, um, we're referring to engineering report item eleven, one and eleven, two, as it relates to the maximum illumination level permitted. Next to adjacent non-residential use or non-residential zones. And the second relates to the pedestrian walkways. And so there was a design waiver noted and there was no objection with respect uh from the Department of Engineering. Thank you. You can proceed.
Thank you. Again, uh, not a ton to write home here about. I spoke a bit about of our landscaping at the top of our introduction. Um, only here to address the uh number of street trees. Um, we are deficient, but we are happy to meet that requirement. There's ample space to do so. Um, it is a point of the engineering review and we're happy to accommodate.
Right. Thank you. And so we will um we'll agree to work with the city's. Tree superintendent to meet the requirements and considering sightlines, however, and so where we cannot comply. We certainly agreeing to contribute to the tree fund, um, notwithstanding we'll make every um effort to comply with that ordinance. Thank you.
So architecturally, um, the, again, the basement plan here, uh, by and large is fully um parking garage. We are, we do have a fair amount of hatch area that we're looking to take advantage of and dedicate a bit of bicycle storage. Um, we believe we could deliver forty eight park uh bicycles uh in the garage. There isn't a dedicated room for that bike storage. It is within the confines of the garage. The garage will be fully secured. We'll have two roll down gates that are only um accessible from residents. Um, so it's a secure building, um, and those that wish to kind of store their bike onsite, um, have the ability to do so in the garage. Um, and should there be space by manipulating some of these areas where we could dedicate um a a parking, I'm sorry, a bike storage. Facility, we would entertain that, but right now the anticipation is to store them within the garage in the open garage area. Also, within that garage, we have two compactor rooms. The building, as we'll see in the the next sheet, is served by two trash compactor chutes. Um, that sort of matriculate from the top floor down to the garage. Um, those rooms will be secured. Um, so vermin and 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 uh and issues regarding uh storage on site. Um, it is controlled. Um, it'll be private hauling for our developer. Um, those rooms will be fully secure. Access will be um um through their maintenance team. Uh, on the upper floors, uh, we'll get to. Um, residents will have the ability to feed a trash chute with general trash as well as provide um uh. Uh, recycling bins on each floor. What else did I miss here? I'll jump to the next sheet, which is our typical floor plan, which we walked through a little bit earlier. Again, those trash rooms that sort of stack above are all the way up. What to note here uh is is our first appearance of our laundry room. We have shared laundry facilities throughout this project. All all four floors of our residential level will have a dedicated laundry room uh shared by the residents um in the building. And we're providing ten appliances for each room, um, which is five washers, five dryer dryers. So there's a total of forty uh appliances in this project, which is a ratio of one to six versus our units. Um, one to six is a much better ratio than the traditional industry standard of one to ten. Um, we know that um folks um in a building of this size, probably in a family application, probably have larger um um. Needs, um, so providing ample um ample laundry facilities is a priority that we didn't want to dismiss, so. We have those laundry rooms sprinkled up throughout the building stacked all the way up. And then. I'll jump to our typical apartment layouts. Um, the general rule here is that um as it is a fully affordable project seeking tax credits. We are bound to meet uh the requirements uh set forth by the NJH buffet in terms of unit size, so no unit here. Um, will be will, on average, no unit will uh be smaller than six hundred and ten square feet for the one bedrooms. Eight hundred and fifty square feet for the two bedrooms and eleven fifty for the three bedrooms. By and large, throughout this project, our units are larger than that. Um, again, none of them will be below the minimum. Um, but on on average, we are, we are much larger. Uh, the building's fully adaptable, meaning all of the the units throughout the building in common area will be. Uh, fully accessible in the common areas and the apartments have the ability to adapt to be uh handicapped accessible should they need to be. The building we fully sprinkled, um, security throughout um is a priority for NCC. So we'll have uh cameras and security, um, a dedicated security officer within the building as per the ordinance. Um, all of that will be managed through NCC's uh maintenance team.
And and just for clarification, and I, this is me uh anticipating Commissioner Vias's uh question. This project comprised comprised of ones, twos, and threes with a number of twenty-three one bedrooms. Seventy-three two bedrooms and twenty-four three bedrooms. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah. I need to remind myself. And then page thirty is. Uh, an excerpt from our elevations. So as you could see, um. One of the waivers we receive, we're seeking is the minimum building uh ground floor uh floor to floor height. Um, our ground floor. Oops. Someone's drawing. Okay, um, that yellow line appeared from someone else. But um, the the material palette here is a mix of of brick, fiber cement panel. And metal cladding. Uh, the purpose here is obviously to maintain a ground floor tactile level of adorable material that's. Able to withstand um some abuse. Um, you know, there's a lot of families in the area, a lot of residents in the building. Um, we're hoping this building stays here much longer than the previous development did. Um, so we want it to stand up, so durability is is uh. The paramount concern of ours, so the the material palette here at at all reaching levels is is a cementitious or or concrete brick. Uh, based product, so again, cast stone uh brick and fiber cement panel throughout. Um, we have not really prioritized a facade, and I mean that in the the most respectful way. We're treating all, um, in this case, six or seven facades that we have equally. Um, that material palette, as you could see, sort of um wraps the building equally throughout. The the ordinance requirement is a fourteen foot floor to floor, uh, ground floor height requirement. Our basement garage exceeds that. Um, the ground floor that faces Morris Avenue is twelve feet. Um, fourteen feet for solely residential use, which is basically what our first or ground floor is, is a little excessive, so. We brought that number down to twelve feet. Um, that's one of the waiver or uh reliefs request we're having. Um, and then lastly, the uh transparency requirements. Um, we we're just shy of those requirements. Again, it's more of a product of, again, most of the building being buried. Um, for the basement garage and then sort of peeking out on the Morris Ave of the Bruce Street side. And then alternatively, on the Morris Avenue side, that that ground floor transparency. Um, since it's so dependent on residential units, there's not a ton of opportunity for storefront that would otherwise offset. Or create um that transparency increase. So um, we're shy. I think the requirement is uh. I believe the requirement is sixty percent and we're at forty-five. I'm gonna jump towards our rendering, just so we get a little bit more of a taste of what that building's design will look like. Again, that darker material uh is brick uh that beneath.
So I apologize. I have to mark this. I don't I don't believe this was submitted, so.
I think you're right.
Madam Secretary, this is A one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the same rendering that's on the T one hundred sheet, but it's a little bit easier to read. Um, but uh, did it want to sort of pull the wool of anyone's design? Thank you. Um, the material here, again, um, this this orangish and and uh dark gray is brick. The base is anchored by a cast stone. Um, as we move up a little bit higher, the material transitions towards uh. A panel product. This is a fiber cement product. I'm sure most of you are familiar with, have seen new developments throughout the city with. It's a material that we're we're very confident is one that uh with withstands the 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 needs in the in the northeast. Um, that we see in cold and hot temperature swings throughout the year, as well as uh, you know, rain and and uh some some weather that we've seen. Um, the colors maintain, the product stays strong. Um, and we feel that uh especially in a project of this scale, we're proud to use it. Um, on on all frontages. Lastly, I had one more note about um retaining wall height and uh fence. We do have a series of retaining walls um towards the the inner portion of our property. Um, the engineering team had, your the the city engineering team had inquired about um defining its height. We took a look. Um, we think that we could reduce the height of the fencing, so that we're never exceeding the allowable height limits. Towards uh six feet, um, so meaning um should retaining wall be four feet, the fence would be two feet. Um, and should the wall be five feet, the fence would be one foot. Um, there are some um requirements that I I heard in an earlier application about. Um, safety, some of those fences need to be a certain height to prevent fall over. Um, but by and large, we think we'll be able to meet all those requirements. We don't really, we don't need to seek a waiver for that. I believe that was it, and I did it in under twenty minutes.
So I have one or two other clarifications that were requested. Uh, the rooftop mounted mechanical equipment, can you just confirm? Uh, that that will not be visible from the street?
No mechanical assistance will be visible from the street. I can confirm.
Um, and then the additional question I believe we had here related to um. The uh the relief sought with respect to that orientation of the primary entrance that just simply relates to the fact that there are no. Uh, direct entrance for that, what we are, you call commercials, spa uh, community space, but that is. The space that will be utilized by new community to run its programming for not only for the residents, but for the communities. Is that your understanding?
That's correct. Uh, we felt that um a a a unique use like this, although commercial. Um, didn't really necess necessitate uh its own dedicated entry. Um, in speaking with the owner, you know, the the concern is really controlling access and making sure security is at its highest. And understanding controlling that access point through one point of entry uh made a lot more sense than sort of having a dedicated access point to the community center itself.
And then the last question, I think, was a question relating to security. Um, the applicant here is going to comply. With the City of Newark City uh ordinances with respect to a security guard, but additionally, there will be cameras installed throughout the property, correct?
That is correct.
And access into the building, both the parking area and the residential area will be controlled through uh one mechanism?
Electronic fob access.
Okay, great. Uh, I believe now that concludes all the questions that were raised with respect to uh in the respective reports. So thank you so much. I have no additional questions for Mister Di Agosta.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Traficante. Come on, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Mister Di Agosta.
Mister Traficante.
Yes, sir. In the engineers' report to the planning board dated April second, we have asked a question about any ingress egress easements. On the adjoining lots to the north northeast. Since Bruce Street's a vacated street, you are aware, half the street goes to the adjoining lot to the south side of the street, in this case. And the other half goes to the adjoining lots on the north side. Now, even if your client owns all the surrounding lots, which I heard they do. At some point, they're prepared to sell some of these lots off, I bet, to pay for this project. Ergo the question. What rights do do your tenants have to trespass on technically on property that belongs to somebody else to get into this site and to leave? Because again, Bruce Street gets vacated. Half of the road goes to the adjoining lots on one side and the other half goes to the adjoining lots on the other side. Could you shed some light, please?
I don't know if I can. Um, I I understand the point that you're making. I think Bruce Street has been vacated for quite some time. Um, can I, and I assure you that these properties will never be subdivided and sold? No, of course not. Uh, but our interpretation and understanding is that Bruce Street has remained uh sort of a paper street and private drive for. The properties to which uh abut it. Um, and that will remain consistent with the hopeful construction of this new building. In terms of what documented easements there may have be, may be, uh, I am not aware of any of those currently.
And does your client own the adjoining lots to the north northeast?
Believe they do, yes.
Right? Is that something they'd be willing to offer? To run with this lot one? And you know, I guess we recommend the condition of approval that they grant an ingress egress easement to lot one, so that in the future. All future tenants have access to this indoor parking garage and these six tandem parking spaces in the vacated portion of Bruce. Indoor parking garage and these six tandem parking spaces in the vacated portion of Bruce Street. Is that something he'd be willing to consider?
Um, I'm awaiting a text message response.
Yeah, we, Mr. Traficante, to Mr. Traficante's point, um, while it's all under the umbrella of new community. E- new community has separate entities that own various pieces of property. Um, but we, we would have, just need one second, Mr. Traficante, if you can indulge us just to get some clarification, okay?
All right, fine.
Madam Chair, just one second, please, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Traficante, that we are grateful for doing that.
All right, great, thank you. All right, um, I got, I'm gonna try to put this all, and one last question, Mr. DiAgusta. Okay, for the sake of time, and we don't have. So, okay, that existing parking lot on the corner of South Orange Avenue and Morris Avenue, all right? I, I've been pretty apparent, your client has no intentions to doing any improvements there, but. Since it is part of the subject law. I would just say. As far as making any improvements, it's a, I understand the seven-space parking lot now. And I trust in the future, it will still be used as one. Either during construction or after completion of a project, when people come to visit, friends, family. There's no parking inside the building, they're gonna go there. As a condition, another condition, ah. Would your client be willing to consider to make any necessary improvements to that parking lot, either. Fixing the curbs, the sidewalks, shade trees, okay? If they need to replace the existing handicap ramp on the corner, if it doesn't comply with ADA. And last but not least, providing lighting to meet the minimums within the parking lot. Within the pedestrian walkway that goes around the parking lot and the access drive to and from the parking lot for Morris Avenue. Is that something your client will be willing to do? I mean, it's seven-part space parking lot. It's a drop in the bucket, people, compared to this massive site. I mean, come on, we're talking millions. We're talking peanuts. Is this something you'd be willing to can, agree to?
Not sure.
I will say yes, they have, um.
Okay.
They will agree to that.
All right, so you will give me a light study or light, whether, tell me whatever minimum ma- what's there now and whether or not it complies, if it doesn't, you'll. Upgrade it so it does. Fair to say?
Yes, fair.
Okay, all right, otherwise, you can collide with all the other comments in the engineer's report to the board dated April second. Fair to say?
Fair to say.
Is that yes?
That's a yes.
Thank you, sir. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Traficante. All right, so. At this point, are there any questions from any members of the board with regards to this application? I'll say for myself, I'm glad to see that the lot is being rebuilt, but at the same time, I have trepidations. So um, can someone speak a little about just security? I hear cameras and I heard cameras and the dag on maintenance man taking care of cameras. I, I believe that was probably a miscommunication.
Uh, if I can, I, I believe what I've indicated is that under the city ordinance, you're required to have um. A security guard, a physical human being with a security guard onsite. Um, so that they will comply with that and they, in addition to that, they will also have cameras that will be installed around the property and in the parking garage. And what the testimony provided by Mr. DiAgusta is confirming that additionally, he testified as to the key file system. For accessing into the building as well as into the parking area.
All right, so my concern really isn't, and forgive me for being frank and being, you know, having my opinions. Right, the concerns aren't gonna come from outside the building. Um, so I'm wondering. How new community is being secured at this point? I know that there's se- you know, different properties under different. I guess ownership, but I know that from where I can see from my house, right, the. City of Newark police is out there in their parking lots. What kind of security are they offering for themselves?
They have twenty-four-hour armed task force for their properties.
Okay. All right, that was my question. Any other commissioners have any questions about this application? All right, um, at this point, I know you, you had Mr. Wayne. What was Mr. Wayne gonna, what's his?
Oh, no, we, we have folks here, should there be questions, but test the application was presented by Mr. DiAgusta.
Beautiful, all right. Um, commissioners, I need someone to present a motion. Wait, we didn't take the questions from. Are there members of the public that have any questions with regards to this application?
Seeing none at this time, I'm sure.
All right.
Motion to move.
Moved by Commissioner Purdy and seconded by Commissioner Scott Roundtree. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Commissioner Disova?
Yes.
Commissioner Purdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bias?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
No. And your application is approved. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All right, so next, we're going to go to the next item on the agenda, which is memorialization of our minutes. We have received minutes from our dear secretary, Miss Carissa Parsons. For March tenth and March twenty-first.
Twenty-fourth.
Or twenty-fourth. All right, so has ever, anyone have any questions, comments, additions, or missions to the minutes? Seeing none, I'm gonna, we're gonna vote these minutes up. Everyone in favor of the adoption of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so the minutes have been adopted. Next is you, uh, Mr. Beck.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Okay, first resolution up. CPP twenty-two dash seventy-six, that's five sixty-nine and five seventy-one. Dash five seventy-seven Broad Street, that was an extension. CPP twenty-two dash one oh three, three seventy-six dash three eighty-two Broadway, that was an extension. Um, CPP twenty-four seventy-six, one one twelve dash one one four South Eighth Street. CPP twenty-four one oh six, which was seventy-one dash seventy-three Delancey Street. CPP twenty-five oh seven, nine forty-four dash nine forty-six Bergen Street. Uh, number six was area need of redevelopment, uh, that was seventeen dash twenty-five Academy Streets. Uh, uh, another area need of re- uh, development. Eight twenty-eight dash eight thirty-two Summer Avenue, and lastly CPP twenty-one sixty-one, which was an extension, that was three oh two. Dash three thirty, three twenty-two Alliance Avenue. All those commissioners that voted affirmatively are permitted to memorialize same. Is there anyone that objects to memorializing? Please state it on the record. If not, these uh, let the record reflect, these resolutions are memorialized this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Good night. Thank you for your patience. Uh, the next meeting is April twenty-first.